Call to order, we have a quorum. May we have the roll call, please, Gail?
Mayor Stix.
Here.
Mayor Protem Haney.
I'm turned on in here.
Councilmember Blatts.
What does that mean? Uh, here in person.
Yes. Councilmember Francina.
Here. You did drop out.
Councilmember Wyrick.
Here and sitting next to Councilperson Blatts.
It's like he materialized.
Hey, uh, welcome to the June 28th, 2022 meeting of the Ojai City Council. It feels like April 1st was actually June 28th. Uh, Councilmember Blatts, will you please lead us in the pledge?
All right, please be after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ryan. And approval of the agenda?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Uh, roll call, please, Gail?
Mayor Stix.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyrick.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Haney.
Yes.
Councilmember Francina.
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, and tonight, we have a very special presentation, the presentation of a plaque to Kathy Nolan for 12 years of service to the city's planning commission. So I'm gonna come around and I'm not gonna embarrass you, Kathy, I'm going to salute you.
I thought maybe you had it pre-up there already.
It is my honor tonight to acknowledge Kathy Nolan's 12 years of service to the City of Ojai Planning Commission. Thank you so much, Kathy. That's a ton of homework and a lot of long, late, and difficult meetings. We salute your dedication and your endurance. Kathy is most proud of her work as the chairs of the Complete Streets and Landscape Committees. As the Complete Streets Chair for nine years running, Kathy co-wrote the policy and master plan with the community and staff, as well as chairing many meetings with residents. As Chair of the Landscape Committee, she worked on the modified water-efficient landscape ordinance and established landscape standards and guidelines. Thank you. I have had the pleasure of working with Kathy, and I so appreciate her thoughtfulness and attention to detail. Although what struck me the most was her compassion for all beings and her deep sense of understanding of life's interconnectivity. Her love of the earth is palpable. Kathy, please accept this plaque as a symbol of Ojai's gratitude to you for your service to our town and planet.
Congratulations.
Thank you. A little tongue-tied. I was gonna write something, I started doing that, I go, no, I'm just gonna do something off the cuff. First of all, I wanted to say thank you, City of Ojai. As a resident of the county, I'm one of those oddball people that does not live in the city. Thank you for the privilege of getting to serve in the city. And, um, I always say to people, um, yes, I live right outside the city limits, but I'm in the city all the time. My kids went to the park, you know, we paid extra to go to the rec center and, you know, we shop here, we do everything here, I, you know. Yes, I'm over the board, but it's my city too, and I'm grateful and for the opportunity. But just a couple of kind of funny things, and you were talking about the time commitment. When I first got on the commission, it was in 2010, and it might have been like my second or third meeting, our planning director, and I've told a couple of you this before, but the planning director said, well, due to the economic downturn, we, uh, the city's not hiring any consultants, so the planning commission has been assigned to do two ordinances. One of them was Complete Streets, that was a state mandate. And then, there was one other one, I think it was the lighting, dark sky lighting, and then the other one was the model water-efficient landscape ordinance. So, um, I kinda lit up with Complete Streets, I'm always into transportation, but that was kind of taken, I became the alternate, and then they all looked at me and they go, oh, you're the landscape person, you're the chair. And I kinda went gulping inside and went, oh my God, what have I gotten into? Because I was a little leery from the start, and to talk to the planner before I even agreed to be a planning commissioner, how much time, you know, is committed? And then, of course, I just, you know, went over the top and put lots and lots of time in, mostly because I loved what I was doing and I was passionate about it. And what an opportunity to work with council members, a lot of different ones over 12 years, different staff over 12 years, and the community, to engage with the community and have them be part of the process, or to be sitting at the dais and having them come up and speak, and taking that all in. So I actually learned a lot, and, um, and as much time as it took, and sometimes it was a little trying, I, I'm grateful. And, um, it was recently, you know, it's been a couple of weeks since I've been on planning commission, and I've had several people come up to me and say, oh, how much did you get paid? And I go, oh, no, I volunteered. And they go, you volunteered for 12 years? And, and I shared the story, but I guess the bottom line is, you know, I would, I'm not looking, I'm preaching to the choir when I look forward, but when I'm looking back, or if anyone's listening on the TV or video, I would just encourage anyone to, you know, do what you can for your community. It doesn't mean you have to be a planning commissioner or do something at the city, but, you know, with the schools, with help of Ojai, I think being a volunteer and contributing to the community makes our community what it is. So, thank you.
Yeah, Mary, can we bring Kathy up here so we can all get a picture of her? Right up here. Here, shoes us. There you go. This is what we used to do.
What did we used to do?
No idea.
Hold on here, watch out, Bill. Can you get us?
I wanted to thank my daughter, who's sitting back here, who came tonight, um, because my family, a lot of times on a Wednesday night, I had to say, oh, I can't come to a family birthday dinner or something because I have to be a planning commissioner, or I have a lot of homework to do. So anyway, thank you, Heather, for putting up with your mom.
Can I just?
Mayor, we'd all like to say something.
We all want to say something, Kathy, come back.
You're not gonna get away that easy. You're not getting away that easy.
So, I just wanna say how much I love and appreciate you, Kathy. I've, I listened to you through many, many meetings, and, um, as you know, we're in sync on many things, and I'm so glad you're not gonna disappear, that you're working with the Ojai Valley Green Coalition, and we're gonna continue to work with you on many green projects. Thank you for everything, Kathy.
Happy to participate.
Yeah.
I just, you've, you're, you've left, you're gonna continue to add to your legacy of service, I know that, but just all the things that you are responsible, or not completely responsible for, but integrally part of responsible for, I think everything, there's so many things in our documents that you were integrally part of that are very constructive and important part, that is part of your legacy, from tree committee to the all-transportation thing, to the, uh, uh, planning grant, to the, the, the addition to the general plan on the, uh, the multimodal and the bicycle master plan, all those updates, and all those hours spending time, and the, um, the way you just approached everything with that, you know, balance and integrity, and, uh, it's, I, we're all just very grateful for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy, thank you. And 12 years of service is no joke, you're gonna make it on the big board back here at some point, right, city manager? 10 years, you get on the big board, so there's that. Thank you, and it's been a pleasure working with you, I really appreciate what you brought. You know, it's, uh, I say this all the time, and, and it extends to our commissions and throughout the community in a lot of different ways, but the secret to keeping Ojai what it is, is that the fourth leg of the chair that holds it up is volunteerism, really great nonprofits, community groups, we're gonna be discussing how to support some of those later on tonight, but, uh, it's, it's, you know, where the rubber meets the road for some of that are our commissioners who really put in a lot of time. And people don't always know that the planning commission, you know, meets twice a month, it is an extensive and difficult, um, you know, responsibility that I'm always impressed of how, how strong you were and how our other commissioners are. So thank you for your service, and, you know, the, uh, the state of the city and, and, and all of the things that are good over the last decade and moving forward are all thanks to the hard work that you put in, so thank you again.
So Kathy, I, they save the best for last. First of all, I, you know, um, we go back 20-plus, 28, almost 29 years. So I've been able to work with Kathy professionally as, as well as, well, professionally here too, I guess, as you could call that, but, um, for those of you who don't know Kathy, um, she has this facade of this quiet and gentle and, and, uh, deep person, and, and she is, and she conducts herself the same way privately. We've been on many bids together, um, and, and it's just extraordinary watching her work, and watching her listen, and watching her take notes, uh, just watching her, and, and I've learned so much from you, uh, from contractor to contractor. From the city perspective, Kathy's always been someone that I've been able to talk to, talk with, and even disagree with. And, and we've always been able to have a, a civil discussion, and, um, where we couldn't agree 100% on something, we could always find that middle ground that allowed both of us to move forward. So I just wanna say thank you for that, thank you for your service, and thank you for being a friend.
Thank you, and I, I want a little share, Randy, um, and I know what you're probably talking about, what we disagree on. It was something that I had a lot of passion for, but I want to say that I am grateful to you as a city council member and as a friend, because it was something we really didn't just agree on, but we both said at the end of our discussion, it's not gonna get in the way of our, us being friends and working together in this capacity, and I think that's something that should be kind of emoted or shared with the community, because I know a lot of times there's strife over certain topics, and if we can kind of find common ground, and a lot of the common ground is that we love our community. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks again, Kathy.
Thanks.
Any commission reports this evening, tonight, James? Uh, we will move on to public communication, and just a reminder, these are items not on the agenda, and because they're not on the agenda, we cannot discuss them. When you make a comment, we're not ignoring you, uh, we appreciate your viewpoint and participation, and we can agendize for the future. Normally, public comment is three minutes, um, and tonight, we'll be using a bet, a chime, sorry, right, Gail? A chime, as a gentle reminder when your time is up. Please respect each other's time and stop talking when the chime rings. There's no giving away time to another speaker. We're doing our best to run an efficient and productive meeting. Thank you for your cooperation. So tonight, let's begin with Anson Williams, and then we have Jane Wyrick, and then Skippy.
Hey, everybody. Good to see you. I've never seen you in a coat, with a coat on in person.
I know, I, I, I do, what is it? I clean up well?
You do, you look very well, I tell you, you're like a cast suit. Listen, my name is Anson Williams, and I'm running for mayor. I know you're thinking, why? Well, it's one word, and that's community. And, uh, I'd like you to listen to what members of our community who urged me to run had to say, and just hear some of their comments, some of their comments. I'm tired of constant conflict because of ineffective leadership, and I've met Mayor Stix, and she's really nice, but she creates problems instead of solving them. El Robar was just one of them. And this, the mayor hardly came through with any of her campaign promises, and that's on the record. But here's what I believe. We need leadership that inspires a collaborative team, our community first, that understands the best of what we have and enhances it, instead of wallowing in what we don't. We need to sustain, sustain and thrive, sustain and thrive. I'm not a fan of growing tourism or constructing one more hotel, not at all. I'm a fan of finding creative ways, creative ways to add millions of dollars to our community without having to rely on hammering in one more nail, unless it addresses our own great need for affordable housing, of course. Nothing changes in Ojai, nothing changes, nothing, except for more opportunities for our residents, our residents. We'll have much more details as this campaign progresses. Together, we can make this happen, together. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Anson. Next, next we have Jane Wyrick, then Skippy, and then Wendy Lerner.
I don't know if I'm in the wrong place or not, I want to speak about the budget. Should I wait?
Yeah.
Wait?
Wait.
Okay, next we have Skippy, and then Wendy Lerner, and then Jill Dolan.
Good evening, my name is Skippy. We need a place to play pickleball in the evenings, since it's gotten so hot during the day. I'm not able to play as long as I would like to each day. If we had courts with lights, we could play in the evenings when it's cooler, and more people could play that have to work, and that would be able to make everybody play a little bit more pickleball. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next we have Wendy Lerner, and then Jill Dolan, and then Tim Kraut.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. We've experienced and are experiencing many unintended consequences from bureaucratic policies, regulations, and restrictions, as well as from statutory law, resolutions and ordinance at every level of government. What are some of these unintended consequences? Well, there were closed businesses and lost wages, there's medical discrimination, housing shortages, misschooling, water shortages, poor forest management, I could go on and on, high utility costs, uh, gas prices, you get the idea. Not all rule by elected authorities, and the web of administration that they create is necessarily good, but often, we have no choice but to live with it. However, and peacefully, I might add. However, there are restraints in some cases, there is some overreach from which we are protected by the Constitution and the Bill of Rights. It is said, all politics is local. If not, with few exceptions, it should be. Thereby, the citizens have a better chance to hold tight to our jurisdictions of freedom, retained by us in the founding documents, particularly the Ninth and Tenth Amendments, which, as, as, um, stated in the Declaration of Independence, are rights from God, not government. We have founders who are wise enough to make that distinction. This is all to say, I am hereby proposing you form a city standing committee to advise in and protect the God-given rights of Ojai residents and citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Uh, next we have Jill Dolan, then Tim Kraut, then Leslie Rule.
Hello, I'm Jill Dolan, and I'm back because we've opened another great show at the Ojai Arts Center Theater, and I know you're all going to want to come and see the music, man. And it was great to hear people talk about residents of our community and volunteering, because this is what we've got at the Arts Center. I mean, we've got a cast of almost 30 people from age seven to 85, going to Topa Topa School and Nordoff and graduating from there, and it is a community place for everybody. It's a great show, it's a great show for this summer and the Fourth of July, and we're gonna be in the parade, and, anyway, I want to make sure that you all have your little cards. May I hand them to you, or shall I just hand them here? Oh, you can't say anything. Okay, um, so, and to all of you who are here, uh, please come and see the show, and think of us when you want to volunteer, because we are people in your community, we're performing, we're volunteering those long, hard hours, and, um, I'd stay longer, but I'm going to audition for the next show, so, gotta go, kids, gotta go. Thank you so much, have a great night.
Thank you, Jill. Uh, next we have Tim Kraut, then Leslie Rule, and then Brenda Kraut.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council and staff. Our pickleball community is not a group of contentious people. We are a large group of law-abiding community members that pay taxes and vote. There's a small minority of people that are complaining about our large group of community members using a public space. Please advise this minority that these public parks were donated to the city for the use of, by the whole community, not just a certain segment of the community. Recently, our pickleball group was allowed to install a fence along one side of the city hall pickleball courts. The cost of this installation was borrowed totally by our group, no cost to the city. This fence was needed for safety reasons to prevent players from injury during play. The city's approval for this fence installation took two years, even though it was a safety issue. We are thankful for approval was finally received. In closing, we are all neighbors in this valley, can't we coexist? Our pickleball group is not an exclusive club, we are an inclusive club, anybody can come and join the fun. It's a, it's a come-as-you-are activity. You don't have to wear a certain brand of shoes, or clothes, or have a signature paddle, or have two years of lessons. So as we move forward, I hope that we, the pickleball community in Ojai, will not be stigmatized by the small minority opposing us.
Thank you, Tim. Next we have Leslie Rule, and then Brenda Kraut.
Hi, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I might run for city council, kidding. So, uh, I am here really to talk about, I sent, I think, each of you an email asking if it was on the table to, um, put pickleball courts at Soul Park, and, um, if that is the case, I wanted to make a case that, um, the pickleball community, both current and future, finds that, uh, an unwise, uh, kind of choice, and the reason being, um, you, we have in our backyard courts that are available right now, um, that are those at Lower Libby Park, and as people have spoken, the two most important things right now to pickleball, well, three, actually, we need more courts, that's, that's the first, so we need to figure out where, um, those new courts can be. We also, as was spoken, we need lights, it is just too hot to play, you know, uh, in the afternoon, this, these courts close at 6:30, there are many, many, many players who, as was also mentioned, who worked a normal nine-to-five job, who just will not have the opportunity to play. Um, if it's winter, it gets dark early, and if it's summer, it just is way too hot. So we need lights, that's really important. Soul Park has no lights, it really has no court, um, we could talk about that as well. And the other thing is accessibility. We talk about biking in Ojai, you put pickleball courts out at Soul Park, and all of the people, and there's a lot of people who bike here, are not going to bike to Soul Park, they're not going to go down Ojai Ave and 150 to Soul Park. It just, it's, it's not safe, um, so what would that mean? Even if they were gonna go there, even if there were lights, it means they would drive, they would drive through the center of Ojai. What is the biggest complaint you hear from people? Too much traffic in the center of Ojai. So it makes absolutely no sense that, given Lower Libby Park has lights, has all of the infrastructure necessary, both for the pickleball players, current and future, and for the City of Ojai, not to use that. Okay, 47 seconds. The other point I wanted to make is, uh, well, the other point I wanted to make, oh, sole use, sole use. Like, there are many people, tennis players, and, and it is, you know, it is, uh, it is a tradition well-loved in Ojai for tennis, but those courts can be dual-use, sole use is a concept whose time has come and gone. There's absolutely no reason to build what you already have and could leverage, it just makes no sense, it baffles the imagination. Reasonable people can disagree about things, but it's really hard to figure out why reasonable people would disagree about that. So I encourage you to read the email I sent to everybody, and, um, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Leslie. Brenda Kraut.
Good evening. My name is Brenda Kraut, and I'm part of the pickleball community. Currently, we have close to 200 pickleball players signed up on our email list, the majority of these players are voting citizens in the City of Ojai, so that means these players will be casting votes for or against each of you. These players are in need of more courts, and now that we're in the heat of summer, the need for courts with lights to facilitate evening play is, is very essential. It is a shame to see eight tennis courts at Libby Park vacant 60 to 70% of the time, when the pickleball community is busting at the seams and desperately needs more courts and a venue with lights to accommodate evening play. The lower courts at Libby Park could provide both the much-needed additional courts and a venue with lights for evening play, without the city spending a dime. Our pickleball group has invested time and money into the city hall campus courts, right here, and we are prepared to do the same at the lower Libby Courts. Please quit delaying actions to address the needs of this growing group of voting citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. Uh, any public comments online, Gail?
I can't see the Zoom queue, one moment. Um, James Hahn, if you could, uh, remove the timer so I can see the, there we go. If there's anyone in the Zoom queue who would like to speak during, uh, public communications, please use the raise hand function now.
Thank you.
Could I just, uh, I, I know we received a few comments about, uh, pickleball, so I just wanted, I did want to note for anybody not familiar or not following that, um, the Recreation Commission has created an ad hoc committee that is reviewing pickleball at this time, so, so that is still ongoing, and we're expecting some recommendations from them soon.
Great, thank you, James. All right, uh, let's move on to the consent calendar, is there a motion to approve?
Still moved, second.
Okay, a roll call, please, Gail?
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Haney?
Yes.
Mayor Stix?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes.
Can I ask something now that we have a full council present? Aren't there a lot of things we can do? You know, where you just say, move, it's, make it shorter? Without a roll call?
Yeah.
That is correct. The only things that require a roll call are ordinances, resos, and spending money, the rest of it can be just voice vote, now that we're all in person.
Thank you, Matt. Okay, let's move on to discussion, item number two, ratify commission appointments. James?
Thank you, Mayor. Then, we have a very, very brief staff report, uh, this, this is now our second, our third time through this, so I think we're probably getting used to it, but, um, with our, our move recently to have the city council make, um, a kind of a rotating appointment, uh, where each council member makes an appointment to each commission, uh, we had agreed, uh, as, uh, the, um, as commissioners were appointed, that we'd ask each to come in and, and, uh, introduce themselves essentially. So tonight, we have four appointments, we have Commissioner McHatten, uh, from the Historic Preservation Commission, Commissioner Prebor from the Historic Preservation Commission, Commissioner Taylor from the Parks and Rec Commission, and Commissioner Walker from the Parks and Rec Commission, um, appointed by, uh, Councilmember Francina and Councilmember Wyrick, uh, and each of those commissioners were already serving and have now been reappointed, but, uh, we did ask, uh, to continue that, we asked them to come, uh, uh, give an introduction. So I believe, uh, all the commissioners are here, and so with that, I'll turn it over to, um, to you to, uh, call on the commissioners.
Okay, great. Any questions from council? Nope. Any, uh, public, we'll move on to public comments, we have one public comment here, okay.
Aren't they gonna speak?
Yes, uh, after Brian Akins. Yeah? Okay, um, we'll have Brian Akins, and then the four commissioners will speak.
I apologize for being late, but, um, it was a good thing. I, I just want to, uh, say that I'm happy, and I thank you for reappointing, uh, Commissioner McHatten and Commissioner Prebor, and I'll let you get to them. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, uh, shall we start with Commissioner McHatten?
She's in the Zoom queue, and I'm going to bring her in. Commissioner McHatten, if you can unmute yourself. There you go. She can go ahead and speak now.
Hello. Everybody can hear me?
Yes.
Great. Well, I'm Gina McHatten, and I've been on the HPC since 2018, and I have enjoyed every minute of it. I've lived in Ojai since we bought our home in downtown 19 years ago, and I'm fully aware of the importance that tourists have on our community and on our livelihood. But I will always feel that Ojai is sports residence. Over the last two years, while preparing for my HPC presentation for the local downtown historic district, I found decades of photos depicting families and couples and children and artists and businesspeople, just like all of us, all coming together in the city center, just as Edward Libby and other visionaries imagined it 100 years ago. Because Ojai is a town of locals, generations of locals, and I've never seen such a town pride or spirit of community like I have seen here in Ojai. And I chose to raise my family here in this community. It's where we eat and shop and socialize, and it was the best decision that we ever made. And I feel so lucky to be a part of this commission, to work to preserve this beautiful and incredible place that we all get to share. But this commission, it's not about any one of us, it's about all of us, all that came before and all that will come. And it is my job to learn everything I can about Ojai's history, as well as local, state, and federal preservation laws. My degree is in journalism, and my background is in publishing. But it was when I met local historian Craig Walker, when I moved here, that I honed in on my passion for preservation. I spent my adult life learning and traveling and finding historic places all around the world, but it wasn't until I served on the board and worked with Craig at Valley Charter School that I would find myself cornering him whenever I could and trying to learn as much as I could from him. He became my mentor. I started reading everything I could on preservation, as well as attending a full year of HPC meetings before becoming a commissioner. I really have to thank him for his endless knowledge and inspiration. But still, the more I learned, the more I knew there was to learn. The pandemic and shutdown of so many in-person learning opportunities ended up being an incredible experience for me. The top state and federal organizations, as well as the best preservation university programs, even vibrant commissions jumped online to provide rich educational opportunities. And I have been there for everyone that I could find. Some have been free, some for a small cost, but every single experience was worth it. And it was always something that I learned that I could bring back and apply my new knowledge to my work on the commission. And I don't plan on stopping to look for learning opportunities anytime soon. I take my position on this commission very seriously, and I am grateful and humbled to be considered tonight for another four-year term. Thank you.
Thank you, Gina. Next, we have Jenny Prebor.
And I think she is signed in as Zoom user, so I'm going to try this. Okay. That was so good. Gina, that was so good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll remove Gina once I pull up the next person. Okay, is?
You will remove, Suzy.
Is this Commissioner Prebor showing Zoom user? You should be able to speak. Is that Commissioner Prebor?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Turn on the light.
Can you see me?
We, you look like a photographic negative, but we can see you and we can hear you.
Can't really see you.
You can go ahead.
Hello.
Can you hear us?
We see and hear you.
Okay. Can you hear us, Commissioner Prebor? Shall we come back to her?
Jenny, can you hear us?
No.
No, okay. All right. Shall we move on to Suzy Taylor, and then we'll come back to you, Jenny, ideally, if we can. Are you unmuted?
She's unmuted.
Yeah, okay.
But she seems to have a problem hearing us.
Okay. Suzy Taylor?
Is Commissioner Taylor here in the audience?
Can you guys hear me? Can you guys hear me?
We can hear you, but we.
Hello? I can see you and hear you. You can see me? But can they see me?
We should say something.
Yes, can you, can you hear, Jenny, do you hear me?
No.
It's too bright, right? What should, should I just wait?
Just speak.
Okay, good.
It's good with the light on.
There it goes. Okay.
Do the monitor on or zoom system, or James, sometimes, sometimes you can't hear.
Yeah. Fun with Zoom.
Okay, Suzy Taylor, next.
Suzy Taylor is.
Not here.
She doesn't seem to be here yet.
Nelson Walker?
Hey, guys, I'm live.
Yeah, live.
Nelson, there you go.
Yeah, ready to go. Good evening, everyone. It's just been an honor being here and being on the board. So I actually moved to Ojai April 11, 2021, with my beautiful family, all the way from sunny New Jersey. So I left the 14 inches of snow and traded it in for beautiful sunshine, 75 every day, avocados, lemons, and all those great things Ojai has. So I actually got started because my daughter, she joins, she's part of gymnastics at Sarrazo di Park, and I wanted to be more involved in the community. My son, he goes to A Place to Grow. He's three years old, and we, you know, frequent the park, Sarrazo di, Libby Park, just always in the community. So I just wanted to be more active and, you know, find out more information about what's going on in my community. Also, being on the board, I do love how vibrant and energetic the community is, very voiceful about different changes and things they want. I come from a community where that wasn't the case, so it's just great, even, you know, you have the tennis and pickleball community coming together. And I played pickleball for the first time ever, and it is amazing. I've always played tennis, so I love both sports. So yeah, it's just been a great welcoming community, and I love being on the board. Luis has done a really great job helping me communicate and meet other people during our open house, which was a great turnout. I met some more families and things like that. So I just want to thank you all for allowing me to be part of the Parks and Rec Commission, and have a wonderful night.
Thank you, Nelson, and thanks to all the commissioners for all your hard work and service and showing up, meeting after meeting after meeting.
I have one comment for Nelson. His children play, are my grandchildren's age, and that's how I met him. And they're, all of them, when they, I mean, it's just incredible watching six-year-olds and three-year-olds running around our facilities and, and thank you. Thank you for coming here, and thank you for being a part of our community.
Thank you for the encouragement. Right, thank you.
Any other comments from council? Bill?
Well, I just, I can't help but be struck by the fact that I'm so grateful for everyone that's volunteering to serve again, because we've served a pretty full plate on both these commissions, between the issues with Park and Recreation and and the Historic Commission, the way both commissions have embraced these challenges. I'll just go ahead and say it, really fulfilling the tradition by our mentor sitting over there, our 12-year Planning Commissioner, and you see that that spirit continuing in all four of these appointments and what these commissions have done, and I just really appreciate it very much. To echo what Councilperson Blatz said, it is, it is integral to how we govern this this community, integral, absolutely. So thank you.
Okay, well, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Are you, yeah, I'm ready to approve, but is Jenny still waiting, or are we done? Are we done?
Believe the city manager just went to check on that. And if it's, there's no need to hear from her, if it's, the tech is the tech, then you can approve the appointment without her being present.
Okay.
As desired.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion to to approve?
Yes, I'll second.
Okay. And so we don't need a roll call, correct, Gail?
I think we do for this.
Do we?
Not on the, this one, voice vote's fine.
Okay.
Straight, don't call in favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, all right, wonderful. All right, thank you. All right, let's move on to number three, the public hearing, fiscal year 2223, and the budget adoption.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm pulling up a presentation. It's about 12 slides. We'll try to keep it brief. Zoom will cooperate. Okay, so this is actually, I believe, the sixth budget workshop this year, and so we're going to try to keep it very brief, because we've gotten into this in-depth over the last three months. We, it's one of our lengthy year budget processes where we started with a budget committee meeting several months back, and we've come back and looked at the general fund, the CIP, Measure C, and and all of the different aspects. And now we are bringing back the final budget document with the changes that were identified by the by the city council as part of those workshops. And so I'm going to keep this one fairly high level, and because, for that reason, at the high level, the big picture for us this year is that we're expecting revenues to increase to more normal levels after several years of reductions due to the impacts of the pandemic. As we'll get to in a couple of minutes, the budget this year is proposed to be balanced at $13.4 million, which is an increase over the last couple of years where, because of the pandemic, it was closer to 10 or 11 million dollars. And so this is more in line with what we would have expected had it not been for the pandemic. So we're finally returning to that normal level. As we do that, we had reduced expenses over the last couple of years because of the impacts of the pandemic. So as we start to get more of that funding, more of the revenues coming in, we've identified four main priorities that we tried to address throughout the budget this year, which is deferred maintenance and repairs, including our streets as the largest, one of the largest projects this year, restoring our service levels, continuing the priority projects, which we'll talk a little bit more about later, such as our parks improvements, several of which had been delayed or put on hold, and the climate mitigation-related projects that are funded by Measure, by portions of Measure C. And then lastly, building the emergency reserves back to a, back to the level that they were, and hopefully exceeding the level that they were, as we work towards meeting our 50% emergency reserve goal. And so, again, at a high level, I think the, our position at this point is we're, we're in a strong position coming out of the pandemic, but we're immediately trying to address those items that had been put off. We're trying to do budget conservatively, and we're trying to prioritize, because you never know what the next economic downturn or potential disaster could be, you know, waiting in the future. We've had a few in the last couple of years. And so that's kind of the high-level budget presentate, or budget explanation. For, I'm going to go over very briefly the budget assumptions. For budget assumptions, the general assumptions we made when we put together the budget, we assumed that our revenue would continue to recover from the pandemic and that there'd be no new business closures. We assumed that, one of the hot topics lately has been the reopening of the Oaks Hotel, which will now, which is now known as the Roeblar Hotel. Our budget does not assume that reopening is going to occur in the next 12 months, which I think has been confirmed now by the the owners of that property, who have said that they're about 18 months out. And so this, our budget assumes the same hotels that we currently have, the budget assumes the same cannabis vendors that we currently have, without any major changes yet assumed into the budget related to cannabis. We also included, based on council feedback, some funding to start doing some managing programming potentially at Soul Park. That's a discussion we're having with the county that we'll have to come back to the council, but we included some funding for that, should that occur. And then the budget also reinstates a transfer to the capital improvement projects from the hotel tax. We, the city had a 20% transfer policy. We've reinstated that at a 10% level this year, trying to start working towards catching up on the deferred maintenance. And so we've gone through this a couple of times, so I won't go through it in depth. But as a reminder, this chart shows our revenues over the last several years. I think our general summary of it is that, as most people probably expect, hotel tax was what was impacted the most during COVID, and it's also what's coming back the strongest after COVID. Property tax, sales tax, and cannabis tax are all relatively flat and have been relatively flat, and so the hotel tax seems to be the biggest area where we have swings, and they, and that has been strong in recent months and has continued even throughout this budget process to exceed what we had expected, so. So that's kind of the big picture revenue-wise regarding expenditures in our general fund budget. Our staffing and our police services make up a big chunk of our budget, but the other priority projects that help to make up the difference of the budget is the, as I mentioned, almost half-million-dollar transfer of, that we proactively transfer hotel tax funding to the CIP to help pay for street paving and other projects. So that's a big chunk of that general fund budget. We also increased our maintenance categories across all levels, up to $405,000 this year. We also immediately, in the budget, for the first time, show all the cannabis revenue transferring to the reserve. So that's $320,000 of the budget. We have $250,000 related to water-related issues and as part of our work with, on the water issues. We have $250,000 for the general plan update, $250,000 in a contingency fund for unplanned projects, which we did utilize last year for projects that came up during the year. We have $200,000 prepaying retiree and pension liability. That's an increase of $100,000 from prior years, as we work to try to prepay that $10 million liability. And then we also have $100,000 in the budget to add the broadband conduit as part of the Casitas Ojai Avenue project. And then lastly, and I'm sure we'll talk about this a little later, but we have $151,000 in the general fund budget towards community service funding at this time as well. So those are the expenditures for the, kind of the big-ticket expenditures that we anticipate in this year's budget. So those revenues and those expenditures leave us essentially balanced $13.4 million. This chart shows what our budget prior to COVID looked like, which is that far-right column. It shows that the expenditures have dropped over the last couple of years and still had not returned to that pre-COVID level, but that this year, they're expected to really exceed that level. And this chart also shows that what we did have to reduce substantially, and particularly in 1920, was the revenues to start offsetting the loss of revenue, I'm sorry, we reduced the expenditures to offset the impact of the reduction in revenues, so. So this chart shows our general fund reserve. We've talked a lot about how our policy is to have 50% or six months emergency funding. We've never met that policy. That policy's been in place for for about two decades at this time. During the pandemic, we did have to utilize emergency reserves, so this chart shows kind of that we were at about 20% to 30% over the last six or seven years, and then during the pandemic, we had to utilize and dropped to 7%, which was our low point. We've worked very hard and managed expenses very closely to try to rebuild it, and we've actually increased to 36%, which, as far as we can find, was, appears to be the highest that we've had in reserves, but we're still not at that 50% reserve goal. that we've had in reserves, but we're still not at that 50% reserve goal. And again, the idea of the 50% reserve goal is that it's six months funding if there was a worst-case scenario. So that's still a good goal to work towards because, as we saw recently, that's not impossible to have a disaster that would impact us for six months or longer. And so this budget includes funding going straight to the reserve to keep building that up, which is something that we hadn't really done in the past. So just, again, we keep, the focus kept trying to be rebuild reserves, pay off deferred items, and set ourselves up better in the future. The last topic I'll talk about very briefly, so all that was general fund budget. We also have our capital improvement project budget, which is a separate fund. The funding for those projects is a record high, mostly because of Measure C, the hotel tax increase. In the past, our CIP would be a couple million dollars, maybe $2 million, $2 to $3 million if we had a good year. This year, we are proposing, or we're planning for about $10 million in projects, which is very aggressive, but it's because of all the projects that had been postponed in the past. Because we received about $3.4 million in that extra hotel tax, we're going to be able to put that into these projects and pick up right where we left off and try to catch up on those projects. So this year includes a lot of those projects, and we wanted to just point out a couple of key areas. As I mentioned, $1.8 million of those funds are going to go towards deferred maintenance items like paving streets, or actually, $1.8 million will be for paving streets. There's additional deferred maintenance, but $1.8 million for streets. $1.3 million is going to, is allocated to climate mitigation projects, such as the ongoing Stewart Canyon restoration project, our microgrid solar panel installation at our city facilities, and then electric vehicle chargers, electric bicycle chargers, and electric vehicles as well. And then the other big category is $1.23 million allocated towards improvement for our parks, and that includes improvements at Libby Park, Boyd Center, and Sarrazoody Park. That one, to me, is the one that I think we can say pretty honestly, if it wasn't for Measure C, those would be put on hold. And I think in the past, those had always been the ones put on hold, but now we're able to use that funding to make sure we're able to get those projects done at our parks.
I have a quick question. I don't want to go too far.
Sure.
Well, a couple of slides back, there was an asterisk. I want to make sure, was that just because that was still an estimated amount?
Yes, because, so for '21, '22, we're trying to project what we're going to end the year at on June 30th, but we're not there yet.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I just want to make sure.
So we won't have it finalized for about a month after we close all the parks.
And then on the last slide, the park portion, does that include, and I, because this is kind of broken down a little differently than I've been staring at all these tiny numbers
Yeah, I tried to summarize it.
Does that include money for the City Hall campus? Is that under Libby Park, or is that different? Or is there money allocated for that?
We have that under, we have that under city facilities.
Okay.
That's another big chunk I don't show on here. That's about, well, there's part of it shown here, but we talk about some of the improvements on city facilities, but overall, we're including $225,000 each year for the next three years. And that's all just catching up on all the deferred maintenance of all our buildings.
And so that's for the non-building part?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and for the campus improvements as well.
That's what I wanted to make sure. Thanks.
I have a question.
Sure.
Why is it that, I know you've assured me many times that there's going to be a new trolley cover over by the bank and benches and more bike racks, but why is that never spelled out there?
Because these are the high-dollar projects. The high-dollar projects. So there's a ton of other stuff we're doing, because we mentioned $10 million in projects, right? So these are $4.5 million of those projects. The rest are a lot of smaller projects, like $60,000 to fix drains at the park, money for bike, you know, $10,000 for bike racks was what we had talked about before, the trolley stop. So this list is intended to be a summary, you know, kind of at the end of our six weeks of review, so this does not list everything.
Okay. It's all record. I'll check back.
It's in the budget. It's in the document that you have.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. And so last, so we have, as mentioned in the report, we have $151,000 dedicated to community funding in the budget. And so we did receive a record-high number of requests for community funding this year, 13 or 14, depending on how you count it, but over $340,000. Obviously, these are all great groups, and we appreciate everything they do, but we aren't able to fund every request without reducing other projects and taking things out of the budget. So, so right now, the budget has $151,000 included. Well, this just reiterates, but, so one of the questions, I think the recommendation tonight, there's essentially two. One is to adopt the budget with all the information we just provided. But second would be to make a determination on the process or funding of the community organization fund, funding requests. I think one thing that we've noticed as we reviewed is there's a lot of information for those requests. We've received the 13 applications. We've received follow-up documentation on some of those applications. And so it would be up to council, but it may be, because we've received so many, it may be worthwhile to identify a process to review those applications more fully at either a future council or committee meeting, but ultimately, that will be up to the city council. So we're recommending adopting the budget as proposed.
Thank you, James. Any questions? Go ahead, Mary.
Two thoughts. One question is, this is the highest our reserves have ever been.
Yes.
And we replenished them in record time. Record time. As well as brought the city back to a high level of sustainability. Yes?
Yes.
And then, Mayor, I would like to make a suggestion when we reach that point about how to review these community organization requests, and I'll bring that up when we go to deliberation.
Any other questions from council?
Not for now, but I also will have an amendment suggested, but that'll be in due time.
Okay. Was there, is this a time to ask if there was a report on that additional 50,000 request for the recreation school, high school internship program? Was there a report, and I missed it?
No, there's not. And that's part of why we were saying it's a challenge to review all of these. The, at the last Parks and Recreation Commission, the commission had talked about starting an internship program and had asked if there was funding included in the budget, but it hasn't been fully investigated yet or developed yet. So we identified it as something that we thought the council would want to know about, but it hasn't been formed, it hasn't been vetted. And so we could either, you know, identify whether it's something we want to fund or ask the Parks and Rec Commission to provide more detail on what they want to do. They meet once a month, so that would push this back to July, essentially.
And I have a question, another question related. I mean, I feel like the people have been waiting to find out if they've been funded or not. So is it, is it an option? Do we have to, like, agree on everything, or can we put this? It's a little bit awkward because we have, it says 50,000. So my question is, if we delay, how long would that delay be so that people would know whether they can count on the funding or not?
How long would it delay be?
A couple of months.
Yeah, yeah. So I think, I think it would probably delay towards, probably, yeah, probably the, because remember, we have a summer recess, so that would probably be the second meeting in August would probably be when that is. We don't have to wait for everything else. We don't, like, just so council understands all their options, is there's no deadline. There's no requirement that it be allocated at a certain point, but there's also, the council can identify some now and decide on others later.
That's my question. Thank you. Yeah, we can identify the ones maybe where there's consensus. Okay.
We will go ahead and open the public hearing. We have two public comments, Jane Wierich and Brian Akins.
I used to be known in the valley as Jane Wierich. Now I'm known as Bill Wierich's mother. That's good or bad, I'm not sure.
I don't know. I don't think so.
I just want to speak on the behalf of the Ojai Valley Museum. I have been active in the museum since you all bought it, and it is a gem for this valley. We have a very minimal staff, and we do what all nonprofits in Ojai do. We work on volunteer help. I want to commend you for your past help in us operating. All your funds go for operating. They do not go for the, I mean, the pay for our staff, and they do not go for such things as our displays. And our, Brian prepares a marvelous outlook for you on what we do with our money. We are extremely transparent, and we actually could not operate if you don't help us because it is very difficult to raise money these days for nonprofits. And we are trying to do the best we can. Want you to know that many other nonprofits have found us, and in the last few weeks, the festival had many activities there. The Ojai Educational Foundation has used our patio. The Living Treasures have met there, and several other places are discovering that we have a real asset in the back patio as well as all our displays. I just cannot thank you enough. Please support us the best you can because we need your help. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Next, we have Brian Akins and then Summer McComas.
Hello, I'm Brian Akins. I'm here as president of the Ojai Valley Museum. This is a financial binder that I bring every year. Does have the information that I gave you at the last meeting. That was through the month of May. It's still June, so we haven't closed out the month yet. As Jane said, we appreciate very much the support that you have given us. Back when this started, we detailed all of the information. We put that money, when we receive it, into an account. We don't put that into the general account to say, hey, time for a party, let's, we've got this money. And we allocate that month, that money each month into our books. So we are very careful on that. We will always remain careful. You have the detailed financial information, projection for the end of the year, and we do appreciate all that you support us with very much. We did, over the last couple of years, go for every grant that we could. PPP, we're out in front of that. We also have a year-end appeal. We ended up doing a late-summer appeal also. We, like many of the other nonprofits, found that people were very generous and very supportive. And so that was very helpful in helping us to keep our heads above, above water. I hope you enjoy the town, we just had a fabulous town talk here. Probably could have a part two on that. It was so very interesting. Leave enough time for questions. We'll work on that. So again, thank you all, and thank you to those that were there.
Thank you, Brian. Next, we have Summer McComas.
Hello, Summer McComas. I am the president of the Chamber of Commerce. I would definitely like to thank the city council for its continued support of the chamber and the local businesses and commerce of the Ojai Valley. So I wanted just to give a few words about what the chamber does, just to remind everyone. The chamber acts as a valuable liaison between the city departments and businesses regarding permits, coordinating the Winter Wonderland lights downtown during the holidays, promoting, promoting and supporting the Pixie Month with pennants in the arcade arches, promoting downtown commerce, along with the list of services that the chamber provides to the city for our fundings that we receive. The chamber will continue to mediate the discussions of how to address formula stores in Ojai, along with various future forums and discussions designed to continue encourage the exchange of dialogue amongst the community, businesses, and local residents. And we look forward to continuing this relationship. Unfortunately, our CEO, Jamie Fleming, is still undergoing treatment for a serious health condition, and our treasurer, Andy Gilman, which would love to be here, is unable to attend because he has just a minor illness, so he's at home right now. But if you have any questions for the chamber this evening, I can try to answer, have the answers to you within 24 hours. Thank you.
Thank you, Summer. Next, we have Kathy Nolan.
Kathy Nolan, again, here representing the Ojai Valley Green Coalition. I'm just going to make it quick. I know I've showed up at quite a few of the budget meetings, but I just wanted to put a plug for the Ojai Valley Green Coalition in our supplemental for Phase One of creating a sustainability hub for here, for the city of Ojai. Year one would include predominantly data-collecting, community engagement, which would include the public, nonprofits, businesses, and of course, city staff and commissions, et cetera. So if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them, but once again, please consider us.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
What do you mean by data collection?
Well, by community engagement would be going out to the community and gathering information, so that's what the data would be. So in other words, finding out what the community wants, what the city wants, putting it all together and compiling it, also creating a database for establishing partners, what all the nonprofits are doing in the city of Ojai, what projects are active, just contact information, so kind of a hub database. Also, creating a, either a page or link for the city, which would be a sustainability page, so it would have all that information in addition to what's happening locally and regionally, so people could use that for education purposes. What else am I missing? Anyway, it's a starting stage of gathering the information to put together ultimately a master plan with a sustainability regenerative overlay, so to speak.
So the purpose is to see how we are doing as a community to model sustainable living? The kind of lifestyle that is sustainable into the future, that has the least impact, the lowest footprint on the earth? Is that the line of thinking? Does it include, does it include the schools?
Well, the schools could definitely partake in the workshops that we would be putting on to gather information. But basically, you know, if you're going to do any project, the first thing ideally would be to go out and find out not only what the city wants, but what the citizens, the businesses, the nonprofits want, or and/or what they are doing. And so rather than working in silos, kind of bringing it all together, so we're more collaboratively and as a partnership. It would also include kind of pre-vetting for grant funding for any projects that may happen in the city as well.
So it could include the basics, like reducing plastic?
Sure.
Is that's all part of that? And what's, I mean, to really, to really note what's, the facts of what's happening in the community?
Right. So it's getting that information the first year, and then after that, a lot of that could be applied to either future ordinances, guidelines, or incentives that the city might want to do, or programs that people can get involved with, so you can actually start making change. And then it's kind of the base information for actually putting a master plan together for the campus.
Yeah, thank you. It makes sense now.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
And it was kind of involved.
You have a question for Kathy?
Yeah, Kathy, when you think of community engagement and outreach, you're also talking about what the community would like to see on this facility. Am I correct?
Right. So it's kind of in general, kind of big, local, bigger picture, and then also the campus. So when we say sustainability hub, it's a hub of data and information that people can access and come for education, for learning, and then, like I said, potentially for use within the city to develop programs, ordinances, et cetera, et cetera. And then it's also the place to go to to find out, how can people get involved? Can I go get, learn about something, go to a lecture or workshop? That, and then the physical hub is actually this campus. So it's kind of putting it all together comprehensively.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Any public comments on Zoom, Gail?
James Hahn, if you could remove the timer. Thank you. We have one person in the Zoom queue who would like to speak, Julie. If there's anyone else in the Zoom queue who would like to speak on this item, if you'd please use the raise hand function now. And Julie, you should be And Julie, you should be able to speak. If you are muted, there you go. Please go ahead.
Yes, hi, good evening. This is Julie Gerard from the Ojai Community Farmer's Market. And I just wanted to thank everybody for supporting us for Earth Day last, this year. We've put in a proposal for next year. And I just think that Earth Day is an important thing to celebrate. And the community really loved it. And if you would consider us again this year, we would be very grateful. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Julie. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to discussion. Randy?
I think we can expedite this a little bit. Maybe we break the discussion out into budget, and then we break it out into community organizations. And if you would allow that, I would make a motion to approve the budget as is. And then any amendments that we need to make for community organizations, do that separately. Does that make sense to anyone? Or?
Would you, before we move forward with a vote, maybe some motions on possible amendments to that?
Great, that's fine.
Okay.
Well, one option I would like to put out there is definitely approve the budget tonight and let the budget department move on. And congratulations to Pam and James for, it's beautiful work. Much appreciated. And then at our next meeting, have, there'll be a staff report with, and James, you've already provided us with some suggestions in terms of narrowing the parameters in the future. Do you want?
Yeah, and I can speak to that just very quickly. The only reason I did it was because I didn't know if we'd get into it tonight. But we had a couple of staff people review. And the decision of who to fund is always going to come to council. But we reviewed and we looked at some basic principles that we had suggested. And we can include these in a follow-up report and kind of dig deeper into them. But, you know, a couple of the things that we identified was, some of the grants had asked for funding to then give the funding to another group. And we, that's something that, if the city's going to give funding to a group, it should be the decider of who that funding ultimately goes to. There's a couple of groups that had requested funding but never attended or presented any information. We wouldn't recommend funding a project that we have not received any additional information or presentations on. There were some grants that had applied to buy something, which is not something that we've done in the past. We've always funded community service, is what we had called it. And so based on past practice, we wouldn't recommend just simply buying something through this funding. There was some groups that had applied for grants that would be for arts or culture type events. And not meaning the museum, because this doesn't apply to them. But for arts events, we also have another grant process through our Arts Commission specifically for arts events. So the staff suggestion would be identifying, or telling those arts events folks to apply for the Arts Commission grants, which are more aimed for those projects. And then we did note that a couple of the groups that the city's provided other forms of support, such as facilities to the groups, or we donated labor and sites, and some, the site to another one of the groups. And we had noted that there should be some consideration of that for if we're giving, let's say we've given one group, you know, buildings for several years, that that should be pointed out somewhere in the application, where then the council, as you're making your decision, could decide, you know, if we funded this group for 10 years, do we continue to fund it? And so it's just, it's just something that should be clarified that wasn't listed in some of the applications. And then lastly, there was a couple of groups that had worked through other agencies in the valley. But it didn't appear that those agencies had provided funding. So I think we had some follow-up questions for them of, you know, are you getting a matching grant from the agency that you're working through? So that was why all of these questions led us to kind of the conclusion that we might need more information.
So in order to expedite, my suggestion is in order to expedite the process, we approve the budget and then get the staff report. And at the next meeting in July 12, we'll have those parameters. And then we can move forward potentially with a different process. Bill, and then?
Yeah, I wanted to say, I wanted to speak up right away. I'm for expediting, but I do have a budget amendment proposal that is related to all of this. And it's really a two-part suggestion I'm going to make and see if we have support for it. One is that I think the appropriate venue to go through all of the considerations that our city manager just went through that you solicited, you know, very appropriately and constructively, is the Budget and Finance Committee. And I think what we ought to be doing tonight is to come up with a total, along with the applications and discussion of the criteria, and let the Budget and Finance Committee get into the deeper dive that's not really appropriate in this venue here, and come back to the council with a recommendation. I think that would be a good constructive way to approach this. The other thing I want to make a point about, and this would be a budget amendment that reflects the discussions we've had over a couple of years now. And everybody knows that I, obviously, I have an interest in the museum. I mean, you know, there was, my mother has been involved with it for years and an integral part of it. But regardless of that, I, so with that full disclosure, I do want to say that the museum is not really in the same category. And we've talked about this for a long time, that it's not in the same category. The museum is the city museum. It is a city facility operated more effectively by this arrangement than we could ever do it with our own staff. It's part of the defining the identity of the community. Incredible amounts of effort go into maintaining the archives, the historic archives of our community appropriately and safely. The town talks, the exhibits that are part of developing our consciousness of our past and our present, and where we're going in the future. And, you know, when I look at page 47 of 182 in the budget, we have separate departments. For example, Arts Commission Department, Historic Preservation Commission Department. And I really think there ought to be a City Museum Department. And what I suggest a budget amendment would be is that the museum be understood as not really a, it's not really the same category of community service, but it be part of a separate department in our general fund. And that that money be transferred into the department, leaving, and then making an adjustment or contingency to leave the $151,000 amount to be considered by the Budget and Finance Committee. So I'm going to make that suggestion and see if there's any support for it.
Susan, then Randy?
I would like to see those two amendments separate because I don't understand why we would do the first one. I don't think we've ever, have we ever sent the, these requests for community funding to the Finance Committee? That's not my recollection in past years.
No, we haven't. I'm suggesting we do it because of the increased number of applicants and the amount of, and the issue of, all of the issues that was just gone through by the city manager.
I have a point of order here. This is, this was voted on and decided at a prior council meeting, is my understanding. So I don't understand why we're revisiting it. Is this a motion to reconsider it? Because we discussed this, debated it, and voted on it at the last meeting. I thought it was pretty clear. We said, we agree with you, we'll just do it next time. Why reinvent the wheel here? This budget's already been proposed. It's the same amount of money. It's not going to change anything about the money they're going to get or what they can do with it. And in the next cycle, we can put it into another section of the budget so it doesn't come up as community funding. But I thought we had an agreement on that.
That was my understanding.
If I don't get support, I don't get support.
Okay, Randy?
So it's always interesting how this, how this works. But first of all, I agree 100% with Councilman Wyerick regarding running this through the Budget and Finance Committee. Just for the reasons, there are some questions and a deeper dive that has to be taken. Just like when we pulled the climate committee's recommendation on reach codes, it needed to be pulled, it needed to be looked at, it needed to have more thoroughness in its deliberation and how we arrive at recommendations. So I would agree with that, and I would second that motion to Councilman Wyerick's motion. And then the second part regarding the museum. Councilman Wyerick is putting to words better than I ever had. And I agree 100% with removing the museum from the community funding system and creating its own division or its own department within the city. I would also take it one step further in as we're thinking of amendments. So one, I want to second both of Councilman Wyerick's motions. And then what I would do is maybe like to see if we could adapt or adopt the recreation high school funding program along with the museum and allocate that $50,000 into its own department also for a future use in the community. There's no, I think I wrote it down here. As we look at all of the CIP investments, if we look at everything that we do in this community, the most important thing that we can do is invest in our children and invest in the future of our community. And those children are. And there are a lot of young men and women, or young men and women, that are in need. There are a lot of them that are just right on that edge, that need some form of support, some help, some mentoring, something. And I think that we would be negligent as a council if we didn't recognize the importance and the value of the youth in our community. So Bill, if we would amend that, I would go along with creating that other department. Or if we would like, I'll pull that out and I'll make that a separate motion in itself.
Ryan?
I never got the finish.
Okay, go ahead, Susan, then Ryan.
Well, I had, I'm perfectly comfortable to pull some of these items and decide on funding them. That was what I had in mind when I came to the meeting tonight. And I'm well-prepared to do that. So, I mean, I'm all for expediting. As far as having the Finance Committee handle this, then it would still come back to us with their recommendations. We would make the final decisions. I just want to be crystal clear on that.
Absolutely.
Okay.
That's my motion.
Yeah, so, and as far as, I'm all for supporting the youth, but I have no idea what this is about. I don't know if this means that we're going to pay a young person to work in a local store and instead of the store paying them? I mean, I have no, really, I don't, if there's someone from the Park and Rec, I guess they're not here to explain it. But I'm not ready for any of this.
And I just, I don't think, I don't think it had been vetted to that level at this point, so.
Okay, I have another question. Do you know off the top of your head, what is the Art Grant Fund? How much it is?
$37,000.
$37,000?
I think it's $25,000.
Okay, yeah, I mean, so right here and now, if we're going to do, I mean, we have, we are an internationally known city for the arts. That is such a pittance compared to the $50,000 for the youth. And they give grants to youth. So there's a lot in my mind that I would have to reconsider. I would definitely want to increase, if we're having all this money, extra money now, possibly, I would want to increase the city art grant, especially, there's at least two people who requested funds that we could send to apply for the city art grant. So that's.
Yeah, and there's also two, you mentioned youth through the Arts Commission. There's also, they also have mentorship, a mentorship program that's funded as well. So there's a few different ways to fund those.
Yeah, so we'd at least take some of that and add it to the art grant, is my thinking. We can still discuss all this, right? We haven't, this is the time, okay?
Ryan?
All right. I can't stand it when we do this. So I'm going to make this really clear. And this is why I hate being here at the Bureau of Health. We voted on $151,000 in the budget. What you're trying to do, that I called it last time, was secretly trying to add $60,000 back into the community funding budget, which is, if you take $60,000 out, put it in a different column, and leave $151,000 there, then you're adding $60,000 to it. We debated this, we voted on it, we discussed it, and we voted that we were putting $151,000 out there. That's what's on the slides, that's what we've talked about, that's what's in our reports, our recommendations, and everything in between there. I don't understand why, after doing that, we're going to go backwards and you want to do something different. So my opinion, and what we talked about, what we voted on before, is exactly the same. I don't understand why it's appropriate to revisit that. Secondly, if I'm not mistaken, when this recreation internship program was in there before, it was $35,000 at the last meeting.
So there, we had laid out a couple of different scenarios. And one of them was, if we funded one way, it would be $35,000. If it was done another way, it would be $50,000. So that's what I'm saying.
All right, I just, but I just want to make sure. Like, it was 35 before. And it was just a line item. It wasn't an explanation or anything.
Right.
But it, but it has changed from 35 in the last report we had to 50 in this one, correct?
Well, it was listed as 50, but there, so there was, I think, one sentence explaining that it could be done for a lesser amount, if it was done another way.
All right, because I'm pretty sure it's the 35 on the last one. But I wanted to know if there was something else there. The other thing is, if we're voting on this new idea, which I don't have a problem with, of sending it to the Finance Committee, then why are we debating this if we're sending it to the Finance Committee? I mean, you just literally went from saying you want to send it to the Finance Committee and then talking about, as if we don't support the youth in the community. We haven't even, we have no idea what this is. We haven't discussed any of this. We agreed last time we would set an overall cap for the total budget for community funding. Now you want to remove something from it, but not reduce it. Is your motion that if we take the museum out at this point and create this extra work that doesn't really change anything about how they're funded or what they do with the money, is that we still have $151,000 left for community? Yet we're taking 60 out of it and putting it into a different column?
Well, I'd just like to say I agree with Ryan. We did vote on this, and we agreed. And so, and, you know, we can make changes in the next budget. We need to get this through so that the, yeah. I'm going to finish talking, though. So that the, so that Pam and James can keep working, right? And we can always make changes next time. So, yeah, it doesn't make sense to me either. And yes, Randy?
So first of all, because I don't want these conversations to be pointed at one another. We don't, we're not angry at one another. You may, you may, you say I'm hiding something, or I'm playing, what's that game where the nut is under the cups and I'm moving them around? This is right here in public. I'm looking that group in the eye, and I'm looking you in the eye. The only thing that I'd like to do is pull the museum funding, pull it separate. Now, maybe the question should be, how would you pay for that, Councilman Haney? And I would tell you real simple. I would ask for a one-time draw from the cannabis funding that goes into the reserve replenishment fund and pull that $60,000 out of that. I would do the same thing for the youth. So I would be pulling $110,000 out of cannabis, one time. That's where I would take the funding from. And that's a choice that we, as a council, get to make. We're not married to any agreement that we made two weeks ago. We're here deliberating on what we would like to do tonight. And we're not deliberating on what we're going to do a year from now in that budget. We're deliberating on what we're going to do tonight. So that's how I look at it. There is money available, if we choose, as a majority of council, to move money from this to here, from here to here. this to here, from here to here. That's my recommendation tonight. Now, if that carries the floor, great. If it doesn't, it doesn't. But I don't want us to be calling each other sneaky, or finagling, or anything of that nature. I'd just appreciate if you asked me how I would pay for it, because I would give you that opportunity.
Okay, Ryan?
I asked last time, and there was no answer. And there was no answer this time either. And now it's 60,000, now it's 110,000. So, let's be honest, though. What you're talking about is expanding the budget by 110,000. That's the honesty. We got to get that out there. I appreciate what you said, but that is realistic. You're trying to take it out of the other columns and put it in here. And by not putting 60,000 and 50,000 in the community funding budget, you're taking it, putting it somewhere else, then if you leave 151,000 in there, it's a significant change to what we have talked about, what we voted on and discussed. So, I want to make sure everybody's real aware of it, and I didn't understand how you were going to pay for it. So, until you explained it, it was kind of a secret, so I appreciate it. I think that we ought to stick with what we agreed to. I thought that was well-thought-out, as 151,000, and that was going to include a total of what we were going to come up with from our options on the funding. Now, we can change that. I understand we can, but I don't understand why we would have wasted our time talking about it and voting on it if we're just going to change it at the next meeting.
Well, if you're allowing this exchange, that's great, Merth. I appreciate that. Again, I never said reduce the community funding levels. I said keep them the same. I never said reduce them by any stretch of the imagination. In fact, personally, I'd increase them, but, having said that, I'm telling you where I would move the money from, okay, which is income, and where I would move it to as an expenditure. So, that's all I'm saying. If that's going to win the day, it'll win the day. If it doesn't, it doesn't. I don't think we have to go back and forth on what we discussed two weeks ago.
No, we don't. And just a reminder, I'm going to say one thing, you know, tonight, the goal is to adopt the budget, so let's stay focused on that, and go ahead, Ryan.
Well, I just want to make sure, right, if the two motions that are on the floor, which I don't know now whether that includes, I don't know if it includes 60,000 and 50,000 to remove out of this and paid for in the regular budget, is that part of a motion on the floor?
I haven't accepted the amendment yet on the internship.
All right, then I'm going to ask this, then. If we did what Councilmember Haney suggested about moving the 60,000 for the Ojai Valley Museum and 50,000 for the Recreation High School Program that we don't know anything about into the regular budget, would that increase our budget by 110,000, reduce our reserves, and not necessarily keep us in balance the way we were before?
Yeah, it would reduce the reserves.
I want to make sure that's clear. Thank you.
It would, okay, it would reduce the reserves, but it would increase the amount of money we can allocate to community organizations. Is that right?
Yes, so you're taking.
It would subject to us agreeing to keep 151,000 as the amount for community funding.
Yes, yes, okay. Now, can I ask a question? Is the amount that's in the budget for the city, for the art grant, is that a fixed amount that we are, we didn't agree on that, or can that also be increased at this point?
So, the way we did it this year, because the Arts Commission is, they didn't have members during the time where they normally budget, was we kept their overall funding the same, and then they're going to come back and ask council to confirm how they want to divide it. So, we're giving them the same amount of funding we gave them last year, and then they're going to tell us how much they want to use for grants and how much they want to use for mentors and all those things.
Yeah, we had, I went to the Arts Commission meeting, the only one that they had this quarter, I think. But they definitely indicated that they would like to have that amount increased. So, I'm asking, am I going to miss the opportunity to ask if council would include, you know, another 5,000, something reasonable, so that they could fund more people that are asking for grants, including students?
Yeah, that could be.
Including the Ojai Retreat.
That could be done now, or it could be done, you know, if we did come back to talk about which ones to fund, that could be earmarked as $5,000 more towards the Arts Commission, or it could be done at any point, at any point during the year, if somebody, if the, like, the Arts Commission comes and makes a request and they justify that request, the council could always approve a budget adjustment.
Okay, okay, that's very good to be clear on. Thank you.
And I'd just like to remind all of us that money is money, and a budget is a budget, and when you take money from the reserves, you're taking money from the reserves, and we almost ran out of money during COVID, and we need those reserves. So, do we have a consensus? We have a motion? Bill, you made the motion?
Yeah, there's a motion and seconded motion.
Okay, do you want to repeat the motion?
I'll attempt to.
Thank you.
And I believe the motion is to move 60,000 for the City Museum into a separate department in the expenditure by major categories illustrated on page 47, and to draw on reserve, I didn't specify it in the motion, for that 60,000 to keep the 151,000 at a existing level to be referred to the Budget and Finance Committee for deliberation for a recommendation to council. I believe that's my motion that was seconded.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ryan.
Well, it's a little different, because it included that it's moving from the reserve. So, he still needs to second it. But, that being said.
Well, I did mention reserve.
I didn't think in the original motion, but that's fine.
Do we have a motion?
Can we, please, no cross-talk.
Historically, James, have, what has been the historical amounts we've funded the community in the past? Has it ever been as much in the near past? I know it wasn't last year, 151,000?
Last year was actually higher, is my recollection.
Okay, so what made it higher last year?
Yeah, so last year was 204,000.
Okay, so why are we reducing it this year?
Because that's what we can afford with the money going to paving streets.
Okay, so, we believe that the money that we're taking out of community funding for this year is a direct addition to being able to pave the streets, as well as what, increase our reserves because they're still below our policy limit?
Yeah, so there's two big things, right? 320,000 going straight to reserves, and then 450,000 that we wouldn't have transferred last year, that we transferred so that we could afford to pave the streets.
I just want to make it really clear that this is not a situation where I have any problem with 60,000 going to the Ojai Valley Museum. I just want to make sure everybody's understanding, by moving it in one column to the other, we're taking money out of the reserve, under this motion, that is, money that's designed to pave streets and get our reserves back because they were depleted to almost zero during COVID, and we are reducing our community funding, though, about 50,000 from what we did in the past. Okay, thank you.
My motion.
So, Mayor, I just have one question here. We have a motion on the table that you didn't allow a second to come place, and that second would have allowed for further discussion. That's exactly what Councilman Blatts did. So, just a point of order, I believe, and I could be wrong, I'll ask the city attorney, but if there's a motion made, do we vote on it, or how do we extend it so that it doesn't matter, it just hangs out there in the ethers? And then, when we're done talking, then we'll come back to it and try and figure out what the motion was.
So, as I understood it, we had a motion, a second, a subsequent motion, that never got a second, and then discussion continued on the first motion and the topic generally. That first motion has now been restated. I haven't, to be clear, heard a second on the motion as restated.
May I ask a question?
If there is one, then we can discuss it. If not, it dies, and we get back to the discussion.
I thought it was a little different as well.
I was asked to restate the motion, and in my original motion that I believe was seconded, I did say that it was going to be, the 60,000 would be covered by a charge to reserve.
Okay, so.
So, I just wanted to, that's all I was trying to do, is clarify, generally, when we have a motion to conduct any type of further discussion, it needs a second, or it's not a motion.
So, we have a new, we have a slightly, well, we're not sure.
I didn't think it was different.
Do we have a second on that motion?
We have a second to the restated motion.
Yes, we do.
Make it easy.
Okay, we have a motion and a second? Could we have a roll call?
No, I have a question. So, the 50,000 is just part of the original scenario. At one point, we were discussing 60,000 plus 50,000, right? That's off the table.
There's only 60,000 in this motion.
And to clarify, this motion will require taking money out of the reserves.
Yes.
All right, roll call, please, Gail.
Mayor Protem Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
No.
Mayor Sticks?
No.
Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, we will move on now to item number four.
Whoa, 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 we haven't finished this.
What I understood.
We're not done.
Sorry.
I'm making a motion to fund.
We need to vote on whether we're sending it to the, we need to vote on whether we're sending it to the Finance.
Can you read?
That was inherent in the motion.
I thought so too, but I think that's what the question was.
No, I thought that was part of Bill's motion.
Part of the motion.
So, we are completed this item?
As I understood the motion, as recounted by Councilmember Wyrick, it was to approve the budget with two adjustments from the document before us. One, to move 60,000 for the museum into a line item, to draw on reserve to pay for that. And two, to keep the other community organization funding at 151,000, and to refer that to the Budget and Finance Committee for a detailed evaluation to come back to council. That's what I understood, the motion that was just approved.
Yeah.
Okay, so, I have a question.
I stand corrected.
Okay, so, the Finance Committee will get the exact same staff report, or similar staff report that you provided us?
Yeah, they'll get all the applications, the 14, or 13 applications, I think.
But, just so that they get this done in the two weeks, they'll also get the reasons, the justifications?
They won't get this done in two weeks. That's.
So, this is not going to come back until?
I would think the August 26 meeting.
August 26. So, it's not possible at this point, if there's consensus among my colleagues, to fund anything on here, isn't there?
The museum.
Budget and Finance Committee.
Yeah, we just voted for that.
The whole thing, we can't pull, for example, the Ojai Valley Green Coalition. Does that mean, for example, they can't start using the office? That's one concern I had, because that was part of the package of funding.
We could take a look at that. It wouldn't necessarily be tied up with the budget requests, but it may take some time. We can take a look at that issue in particular.
Okay, all right, now we're ready to move on to item number four?
Just have one more comment, Mayor, if you'd allow it. I just want to make sure that we recognize that I'm going to reserve the right to bring back the high school internship program for some form of funding down the road, obviously with council support, after it's better flushed out through the Recreation and Parks Department. But I just, I don't want to lose sight of that.
Okay, all right, now we will move on to item number four, the Reach Code Ad Hoc Committee Recommendations, and I'm prepared to make a motion after the council completes discussion. James?
Thank you, and we have a couple of slides on this one, just to explain the current reach code and then the recommendation. So, this item is the return of the Reach Code Ad Hoc Committee Recommendations from a few months back. Just as a reminder of what a reach code is, a reach code is a local building code that reaches beyond the minimum requirements, particularly in this regard, related to energy usage in building design and construction. A couple of years back, the city adopted a reach code that required all electric appliances in all newly constructed, single-family residences, multifamily residences, and non-residential buildings, unless an exemption applies. So, at that time, the ordinance that was adopted by the city had these exemptions, an exemption for temporary buildings, attached ADUs, freestanding ADUs that would require an electrical panel upgrade, stationary emergency generators, any portions of a building that contains any deed-restricted affordable housing, any project where compliance would impact a participation in a PACE energy program, and remodels or modifications made before the implementation of the ordinance, newer modified restaurants, and then finally, newer replacement swimming pool heaters and related equipment. And so, those items were all exempt from being built to the reach code standard. And so, we reported at the last council meeting that we discussed this, I believe it was March, that under that current, the current reach code that's been in place for over a year, that the city has approved two single-family residences since that time that were built, no new commercial buildings, and 20 accessory dwelling units. Because of the, because ADUs are currently exempt, those 20 accessory dwelling units were not required to be built electric. Several of them are, some of them were built all-electric, but they weren't required to by the reach code. And then, the two single-family residences both predated the adoption of the ordinance, so both were exempt as well. And so, we reported that back in March. At that time, the city council created an ad hoc committee with councilmembers Blatts and councilmember Haney to review the reach code more closely. The councilmember committee met several times and made the following recommendations, which is to remove all exemptions from the ordinance except for the ADU exemption and the affordable housing exemption, require all other buildings to be built electric-ready unless the property owner can show that it cannot be accomplished due to hardship, and how that would be done is, we'd have a thorough attestation process, which would require, where we'd give the building, the builder or the property owner, information about potential benefits of electrification, and they would have to sign a, sign acknowledgement to attest that they had received that information and that they were requesting not to build electric. And so, and they'd have to meet one of two hardship standards, which would be either that the cost would be a hardship, or the construction ability would be a hardship. And for example, one thing we talked about was that some parcels may just not be able to have the panel upgrade needed due to the lack of the electrical service. So, that'd be an example where there'd be a challenge to actually build it that way. So, if that property owner had signed the attestation and could prove, or could show that, then they would be exempt. And then, last, that last note on this slide just talks about some of the language. If we were to make those changes to the ordinance, we'd have to make some of the language, some small tweaks to the language to make it match. Some of the things in the way the projects are defined could be rewritten at that time, so I won't belabor that point. But, so, that recommendation has come back from the committee, and it's presented to the council for review tonight. An ordinance hasn't been drafted at this time. We would wait for the full council direction to draft an ordinance.
Thank you, James. Any questions from council?
Yes.
Susan?
So, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding that due to time constraints, this report came out before the full committee could vet it, so, and it even says so in the staff report, the ad hoc committee has met, and the council members have recommended that the city prepare an ordinance that would be, apply as follows. So, my question, and I don't know if this is more appropriate for when we discuss, but I would like the justification for these, for the recommendations. Am I correct that this came from councilmember Ryan and Haney?
Yes.
It came from us, because we're on the committee, but we worked hand-in-hand with Dr. Colome, the, they reached, we had them doing work to reach out to the affordable housing, the, from Habitat for Humanity, what else did we do? We had, this was all in concert with them. Everybody came to this consensus, it wasn't just us deciding.
We pulled all the building department data.
They did not agree, my understanding, I don't know if they're here to speak on it, but I heard differently, so, I'll save that for during the discussion. And also, I want to point out that on the first item, that should actually be two items. Those are the two most important exemptions in my mind, and they're, the freestanding accessory dwelling units and affordable housing, those are two completely separate things. So, if we go, if we end up during discussion voting on exemptions, I'd like to see them separated.
We're still on questions. Any more questions? Yeah, Bill?
I was wondering how the, in the, from the standpoint of reducing greenhouse emissions from the broadest possible general systems viewpoint, I was wondering how the committee and the staff handled the action, or incorporated the implications of the action by the California Public Utility Commissions on February 24, where they unanimously adopted a framework for mandatory biomethane purchases, accelerating a pathway for gas distribution, decarbonization, expanding the market for methane waste, and, looking forward, January 1, 2023, the natural gas utilities that are going to be part of the evolution into renewable, they must submit renewable gas procurement plans by the 1st of next year. I was just wondering how these actions by CUPC were incorporated into the analysis.
They weren't, you know, for all intents and purposes. We looked at the adopted reach code, we looked at the number of units that have been built since that time, and the potential impact of the modifications to the reach code, but we didn't reanalyze the entire concept of the reach code.
Don't incorporate the actions of the CUPC on February 24 of this year. Okay, thank you.
Okay, we will move on to public comments. First, we have Carla Melson, then we have Charlie Franciscus, and then Carmen Morito.
Good evening. Now, my understanding is we were here, we were going to be able to talk about the ban on gas-powered chainsaws, and I called the city council today to see if that was part of the agenda, and they said it was. So, I'm not here to talk about ADUs and.
Okay, we're talking about the reach codes tonight, so. So do you want to come back to another night and make a public comment?
And so we're not, you're not talking about the ban on gas-powered chainsaws and how that's going to affect? Okay.
No, that was adopted at the last meeting, but we do have an item coming to council at a future meeting to create the permit process.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, Carla. Next, we have Charlie Franciscus. Oh, okay. Never mind. Carmen, are you here? Same thing, okay. Joel? Okay. Colin Jones. And then I have one blank card if somebody fills one out.
Sorry, sorry about that. And the agendas are always available online, and you can subscribe. And if you get a chance to do that, you can always look at what's coming up. It's kind of confusing, yeah. Sorry about that.
Sorry about that, Carla. I apologize to all of you for coming, but thank you for coming.
Colin Jones. Mayor, council members. November 2020, the City of Ojai's website boasted the following headline. "City of Ojai Takes Bold Action By Adopting Reach Codes Requiring All Electric New Construction." But you hadn't really, had you? Because you spent the next year and a half discussing something that if passed would affect what? One or two homes? And you would have taken away the citizens' rights to choose between natural gas and electric for that purpose. Why do you want to take away our right to choose? Do you know that 40% of California's electric power comes from natural gas anyway? Why do you want to stop us choosing natural gas? What is the point exactly? Is it because the Ojai Climate Emergency Mobilization Committee, takes three minutes to say it, suggests that it has the answers? The people you take advice from? Well, I attended a Zoom meeting probably a year ago, and I had a few questions for them. My first question was this. If we phase out our last nuclear plant, stop using fossil fuels while at the same time moving to the electrification of all transportation, where's all this power coming from? Their answer. The state intends to ramp up green energy in the form of windmills and solar, and that should, should be sufficient. I lived in California for 50 years, and I know that should means won't. Do you want to bet your futures on should? My second question was, bearing in mind the rolling blackouts that have occurred in California, can we depend on renewables only for future power? Their answer. There will be periods without electricity, so we will have to wait until the power comes back on. Lovely, especially when it's 105 degrees. Or we prepare by installing a backup generator. Great, except that an automatic backup generator installation costs $10,000 to $15,000 per home. And by the way, runs on fossil fuels. I also explained to the committee that during the Thomas fire, we stayed to save our home and that we were without electricity for seven days. The air outside was filled with smoke and ash, so bad we had to wear respirators. Luckily, we had gas, so we could boil water, cook meals, and bathe ourselves. When I pointed out that gas allowed us to save our house, their unbelievable answer was, I should have barbecued. Yes, outside, you don't have to wear respirators.
Thank you, Colin.
Can I have one more? I'm only one speaking. The final answer was this.
We have a few more.
Don't worry about the extra demand for electricity in Ojai, Colin.
I'm sorry, Colin, I'm going to have to cut you off.
So if Ojai isn't building many more homes, why do we need the Reach Code? Thank you.
Okay, we have Wendy Loner. And then I'll, one card with no name. Is there anyone else out there who would like to speak? Okay, all right. Wendy Loner?
Hi again. It's claimed that the restrictions in the Reach Code are cost-effective, and I think it's because, it's claimed, that the Title 24 of the California Emergency Codes and Standards document somehow shows that to be the case. But I looked through this, read much of it, and I could not detect the accounting for subsidies, discounts, tax credits, offsets, and rebates for, it seemed like at every step the heavy hand of government and powerful NGOs are weighting the cost with incentives, disincentives, with restrictions in supply, with choosing winners and losers in this decision as to whether you could have your choice in the form of energy you'd like. And they really aren't cheaper alternatives if the government finances the weighting because you as taxpayers, we as taxpayers, if it's that money, or at least it's taxpayer money or borrowed money that the future generations will be responsible for. There are, it seems to me, implicit pipe dreams in the Reach Code about renewables, but I suggest they are insufficient to provide adequate energy without using fossil fuels at the energy production sites. And I don't think that's going to change from everything that is being learned about those particular two renewables. Nuclear is a different case, but that isn't seemingly being considered. The alternate is restricted energy, brownouts, and a declining standard of living. As Reach Codes are expanded, I'm not saying this particular code will cause that, but this is not the end of it. There's more to come. And this is, I'm afraid, the proverbial camel's note, camel's nose under the tent. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Any comments on Zoom, Gail?
If anyone in the Zoom queue would like to speak on this item, please use the raised hand function now. And we have one person, Steve Colome. I'm going to bring him in. I'm going to allow him to speak. Mr. Colome, if you can unmute yourself, you should be able to speak now.
Sure, I'm unmuted. So I'm speaking as a, as a member tonight of the Ad Hoc Reach Code Committee. The Ad Hoc Committee met a couple of times over the past couple of months with productive information sharing and discussion. Justin Pennington and I were the two public members of that committee. Justin is a professional engineer and an energy expert with knowledge of building codes and the direction the state is taking in terms of electrification. We received a copy of the administrative report only last week as it went out to, with the council agenda packet. And both Justin and I were surprised by the continuing blanket exemptions for freestanding ADUs and affordable housing units, for these are the very class of new residential buildings most in need of construction with modern, high-efficiency electric appliances. It is important that we avoid further investments in outdated and inefficient appliances and construction methods that will be with us for another 50 years or so. Justin and I met with Darcy Taylor, the CEO of Habitat for Humanity, and his board chair to discuss their making a commitment to build affordable units in Ojai without any gas connections. Mr. Taylor had explored the issue before our meeting and was convinced that this is the right direction, and he promised that they would be providing all-electric options for Ojai at the proposed Montgomery Street site. We urge the council to direct staff to amend the ordinance to eliminate all categorical exemptions. We also encourage a clear appeal path for building applicants who can attest to cost or other valid reasons for needing to build with additional piping and plumbing costs that would be required to add an unnecessary gas connection. Building all-electric is not an impediment to affordable housing. In fact, this is the least-cost building approach, both in terms of first capital costs and long-term utility cost. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. We have one more.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Justin Pennington, let me, let me see.
Is there, do we want to keep people on the line for questions?
So the next person is Justin Pennington. Mr. Pennington, you're unmuted. You can go ahead and speak.
Hi, good evening, council. My name is Justin Pennington. As Steve mentioned, I'm a local mechanical engineer with a focus in, in green building, energy efficiency, and sustainability. I had the privilege of being on part of the Ad Hoc Committee to meet with council members Haney and Blatts and James Vega. And I was pleased to see that many of the Reach Codes exemptions that we discussed have been eliminated to strengthen the Reach Code. As Steve mentioned, I believe that the two remaining exemptions for the standalone ADUs and affordable housing can also be eliminated. During our discussions, we talked about the new 2022 Building Energy Code, which the state is passing into effect, that will go into effect January 1st of next year. The new energy code is relevant to our Reach Code because of several items that relate. The, the new energy code will require that all homes, residential homes and ADUs be electric-ready. So that means that water heaters, furnaces, cooktops, stoves, dryers, all appliances that have traditionally been gas can still be installed as gas, but it requires that the electrical infrastructure, wiring, dedicated circuits be in place to support future electric appliances in all-electric construction. It also establishes that heat pumps are going to be the new standard for both water heating and the space heating of homes. So this means that any new construction standalone ADUs or single-family homes in Ojai built next year will need to meet these requirements. So the homes can still be built with gas, but will need to be future-ready for all-electric. Electric-ready will be the new standard, which means that if you're going to be building with both gas infrastructure and electric-ready infrastructure, it's going to be less cost-effective than just building outright for all-electric from the start. And the Reach Code is designed to exceed the state minimum standards and reach further to meet our local climate goals. So therefore, I believe the exemptions for standalone ADU and affordable housing can be removed because all-electric will be the most cost-effective method and most energy-efficient and climate-friendly. And I'd like to state again that the Reach Code only applies to new construction. So this is not, is it existing home alterations? It's not additions, it's not equipment replacements, it's not junior ADUs or attached ADUs or garage conversions. This is only for new construction, and I believe if we can eliminate putting new gas infrastructure, again, that will be, and strengthen our climate goals. And I hope to continue to work with the council and the community on how to tackle the larger issues at hand, which is the existing inefficient and dangerous appliances in our homes, which were built many before energy standards. And I think this can be done by providing the homeowners in Ojai with access to resources, local contractors, and incentives to support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Could we get Steve back for a moment to answer Ryan's question? Okay, never mind. All right, let's move on to discussion. Okay, go ahead.
All right, so a few things. We walked out of our meeting with agreement with everybody, but I don't know that this is the same thing we agreed to. And I saw this on the agenda, and since I was in the Ad Hoc Committee, I missed this very nuanced point. But where this talks about remove all exemptions from the ordinance except for freestanding accessory dwelling units and affordable housing units, well, I mean, we, we obviously, what we wanted to do was make sure junior ADUs and attached ADUs were exempt. We all agreed to that. But I thought that we had talked about ADUs. Now, we left, there was a, we had a discussion about ADUs. By the way, in this discussion, we talked about pools, future additions, how this might work down the path of all kinds of different permutations, how this might work in the future. So it did not, this was not a discussion about, all right, let's just cherry pick a couple exemptions and see what's going to happen. The idea of building these buildings electric-ready, but with the idea being that you could still use gas if you wanted, attested to that, what we wanted was choice. We wanted people to be able to choose, but we didn't want it to be in the future if they couldn't. And what we were being told was that anybody in their right mind would do electric because it was better, less expensive. So if they're forced to do electric-ready, they're highly likely not to choose anything else. And we liked that as a better option than saying it's got to be this way versus that way. I thought that we agreed, and I, maybe I'm wrong. I don't have my notes from our meetings in here, but I thought we were willing to go to electric-ready for ADUs. But there was a big question about affordable housing because we had just had a presentation by Darcy from Habitat for Humanity, and he did not feel comfortable saying that ADUs could be done with gas-only. This is the first time I have heard that we got feedback on it. Nobody contacted, nobody told me. I don't remember seeing an email. We never had another meeting after that. So I'm a little unhappy with the fact that we're getting information from people in our committee who are being told, don't agree with us, but we didn't get that information. So if the Habitat for Humanity people believe, and the other affordable housing experts believe that that is a way to do it, I think we ought to maybe at least leave it open. We can decide later if we're approving something. But I think that, you know, if they can do it, I don't necessarily feel like we have to have an exemption or non-exemption, but I don't want to have that be a reason we can't make housing affordable. And I don't want it to force affordable housing into what is a complicated scheme of kind of affordable, not quite affordable, and you can have some costs that move it up from one section to the other. But I, I'm not, I, my memory doesn't recall that we weren't okay with electric-ready, and our belief was that there wasn't a significant increase in cost for prepping a property for being electric-ready if they still wanted to do gas, and, and, and that we were okay with that on ADUs. So I'm, I'm a little confused there. I'm going to ask this though. Mr. Haney, do you remember?
Yeah, I can clarify some of this.
Okay, all right. And if anybody has a better answer, James, if I'm just wrong, let me know, but...
Well, the one thing I do want to point out is, so I've reached out to Darcy, and he's very excited about getting the information on electric, but they haven't done the analysis yet.
Okay.
So the statement that they are ready to go is not quite accurate.
Okay, I appreciate that.
They're very interested, they're asking for more information. But really, what they're going to bring back to us on our project, our Habitat for Humanity project, is they're going to bring us both options and tell us what both cost. So it might cost less, but he doesn't know that yet.
Okay, thank you.
Bill?
Yeah, I, I had heard, you know, the idea of electric-ready, exactly, provides, preserves choice. If it's the cheapest way to go with all-electric, then that's how it'll be built. So why does it have to be mandated? On the other hand, I, I want to keep hammering this point, that there's this whole issue of renewability being broader than just electrification. And the, gas is turning into renewable, just like electricity is turning into renewable. And we seem to be ignoring that. And I want to take this opportunity to make a quote, a couple of things that apparently have not been included in the analysis from the CPUC. The CPUC set biomethane targets for utilities specifically focused on a broad residential and commercial gas users. One of the commissioners, I'm going to quote, saying, "Tackling methane, which is far more damaging to the atmosphere than is carbon dioxide, far more damaging. Tackling methane and other short-lived climate pollutants is critical, given our climate crisis. This decision will reduce emissions from some of the state's leading methane sources. They're specifically focusing on landfills and organic waste diversion, which is what everyone is struggling to handle right now." And another statement, official statement from CPUC said, "Reducing short-lived climate pollutants, far more potent carbon, greenhouse gases and carbon dioxide is one of the most effective ways to slow the pace of climate change." So in other words, the idea that we are going to get there in terms of maximizing our progress on managing greenhouse emissions only with a narrow view of electrification as opposed to a broader view of renewability, I think is a mistake. The California Air Resources Board 2019 data says that the sectors of otherwise uncontrolled methane and black carbon emissions in our waste, landfill, agriculture, and forest management sectors are 75% of the state's methane emissions, according to the California Air Resources Board. You know this better than I do. My point being is that I think the general, I think the idea of where you guys were going with the electric-ready is, is perfectly appropriate given these broader developments in our regulatory framework towards overall renewability and climate emissions progress.
Go ahead.
I just want to say that, yes, and, and I just want to use as a public service announcement. The reason why everyone in California is now required to wrap up their used food and put it in the brown bin is this exact problem. Methane... Methane gas seepage at landfills and other waste is an unbelievable amount of pollution when you look at the hard numbers. And methane, I want to, roughly like, it's nine times worse, I think, something like that for the environment.
Yeah, eight or nine.
It creates eight or nine times more heating than carbon dioxide does by itself, and, and that's a very key thing. I just want to put everybody on that track to remind them. That's why, you know, methane is a serious, serious problem that we have. But we, we did, we liked the idea of, because our future is unknown, we don't know whether tomorrow or the next day, there might be a change in the way things are going. It kind of makes sense in the modern era to have two options in the home so that whatever happens down the road, you don't have to rewire it.
Agreed.
Randy?
Yeah, I think it'd be easy just to say I concur, but, you know, we, we did meet as a group, and we really deeply discussed the original reach code, and, and we all, we went line by line on each of the exemptions. So, so there was a thorough discussion. If, if in the end, Steve and Justin weren't 100% sure of what we agreed with, all's I would say as part of the committee, I'm sorry that you, that you didn't feel that way. I felt when we left that room that we had an agreement as to what we were going to do. And the biggest reason that we didn't go 100% on the ADUs and on the affordable housing was the fact that Justin made it clear that the future electric code is going to require this dual hookup. So that's why we said, if it's going to be required, we'll require it. And if someone is going to spend the money to run, change their, their power box and run additional power out to an ADU, they're more than likely going to spend the money and actually go all electric. When you think of an ADU and you think of the, the small number of appliances in it versus what you have in a regular home. So that's, that's why we did what we did. And the other thing is, these reach codes can always be amended. So once again, we're, we're fighting over, are we at 110% or are we at 90%? The reality is, we reached as far as we could go, and I would call this reach one, because down the road, when we actually reconvene a reach two, which I'm going to ask that we agendize later on this evening, in that we actually start look at, looking at the reconstruction aspect of our community and look at what we can do to actually create a environment that's conducive to educating people as to why they need to go electric, or again, offering the opportunity or the choice to do that. So Mayor, I think if you're ready to make a motion.
I want to add one thing to what Randy said to make it clear, real quick.
There's one thing that wasn't very highlighted in here, James, and I appreciate the report. But one thing we talked about a lot was education, because we've been told over and over again that this decision, electric versus gas, is obvious, and we're hearing it from one side, that it's cheaper, it's better. There was really no drawback in electrification over gas, according to the people we were talking to. So we thought it was really important that we should add an element of this as providing that education to people that come in. So we actually asked for them to create some materials, that we would have a process built in for permitting anything in the city, whether it has an exemption or not, that would force them to be providing it. It would force them to sign something that they've, in addition, it was supposed to include that they would have had to attest to reading the information that they had if they were claiming a hardship, that that had to be part of their hardship declaration, was that they could confirm that they'd actually read the documentation, because we wanted to see people in a situation where, all right, if it's still after all of these reasons that they've been told that it's the best it could be, and this is the best way to do it, then only after that would they even be eligible to consider a situation where it may be only gas. And even with that, the, the building codes, I appreciate you clarifying that, Randy, would still require it to be dual purpose.
Right.
Okay, I got, well, I just want to say that today alone, we received three, three reports. One was in the New York Times on a Harvard study that identifies toxic contaminants from gas ranges. We also received a report from the Physicians for Social Responsibility on Health Effects from Gas Ranges, and a Stanford Engineering Study on Natural Gas Demonstrating Gas Leaks Into Residential Kitchens. The valves of residential ranges leak due to the high pressure gas supply lines. Then I want to point out that with your two exemptions, those are usually the smallest units, and those are the very people that would be breathing these fumes more than people with high ceilings and adequate ventilation, you know, a tiny, I, I don't understand it. I mean, I do want to separate, but I do not understand at all any justification for an exemption for freestanding accessory dwelling units. As far as I know, the ones I saw with, at Venus, they were always electric. Are we, did I misunderstand, or are we in agreement at least on that one, that we remove that exemption? I just didn't understand the justification for that one. With affordable housing, I could.
Are you asking me?
I'm going to jump in here, because there is no more down the road for any of us, for our planet. There is no wait and see what happens. During the period of time between 1895 and 2018, there's been a 2.6 degrees Celsius increase in average temperature in Ventura County. This is the largest temperature increase in any county in the continental U.S. If future generations are going to have a habitable earth, we must simultaneously address climate from the top down and the bottom up, and meet in the middle with a sustainable planet. World leaders need to act now, and we do too, right here in Ojai. It is our responsibility to take immediate decisive action to reduce our carbon emissions, thereby doing our part to avert future temperature increases both globally and locally. In addition, Ventura County has a massive history of fossil fuel extraction in which we are still engaged. Therefore, we must be leaders, not followers, and change our behavior first and not last. The vast majority of new development in Ojai is standalone ADUs and affordable housing. Therefore, exempting affordable housing in a freestanding ADU is not, is a non-starter. We need a clean reach code with no exemptions. In an effort to move forward to clean our reach code tonight, I offer the following motion. I make a motion to amend our reach code to remove all exemptions.
And would that include, include the hardship where they can make a case if there's a hardship?
And we can, and direct a staff to, to look into that.
Right.
Yes.
Then I would second that motion, as long as there can be, you know, there's some real far out situation where they can demonstrate not just a financial hardship, but more, more than that, you know, to do with just a, on a practical level.
And of course, and we're getting the data.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion, and we have a second. We don't need a roll call on this, correct? Mr. City Attorney?
We are going to have discussion?
Discussion is, of course, the council's discussion. Because this is a direction for staff to write an ordinance to return, no roll call is required, although I suspect it may not be a unanimous vote, so plainly state your ayes and your nays.
Okay. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Was there discussion?
What?
Yeah.
There's going to be.
I'm sorry, we weren't sure if there was discussion. If not.
There's going to be discussion, isn't there?
Okay.
There's a motion and a second, and so there typically is an opportunity for discussion after that.
Any?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Bill raised his hand, I, I raised mine.
Mayor, your statement again is sophistry. It does not subject itself to the discipline of the issue of how to maximize our efforts to minimize climate change by looking at greenhouse emissions, which is more than carbon dioxide. So it's, it's sophistry rather than analysis, and I cannot support the motion.
May I?
Hold on, any, any other comments?
Yeah.
Ryan?
I, I just, I, I think that educating people and making sure they're aware of the electric possibility of it being cheaper, better, cleaner, and everything else is an important element to all this. I don't think telling them what to do is the right way to get their consent, and I don't think we know, we don't have a certainty in our future about how this is going to work. So I think requiring them to be electric ready, which our building code is going to do, and I'm happy to entertain an amendment that would include ADUs if necessary, if that's something that everybody would want to agree with. I don't agree, because we can't get feedback from the people that do affordable housing that gas is going to work for affordable housing. So I think we got to hold on to that and see later on. But the idea that we are trying to fix this gas problem because of health in the homes is just not accurate. That's just not the reality of it. People have gas that they burn in their homes, they have older homes, they aren't going to be subject to any of this where that's a problem. They don't have hoods on their ranges. There is not a massive outbreak of problems regarding these situations. I've read all the data, I've been provided so much of it. You're not looking at how many people get electrocuted in their home, how electricity is a real problem, how it started the fire that almost burnt our town down. So stop making electric into being the king of all great things. We don't know right now. Nobody here is trying to say that we're not for climate sustainability, for our, our, being a leader in these areas. We are a leader by looking at this and finding something that's reasonable, that people can hold on to and say, you know what, I may think this is a little much, but they sure thought about it, and they sure did the right thing, rather than the simple thing, which is to just pound the table and go, well, we're going to outlaw all of it, no matter what. That's not nuanced, that's not smart, that's not well thought out, and that's not leading, that's following. And I don't agree with that. I think that we've got to get this information to people's hands, see what turns out, and if they have an option between A and B, and they go, wow, it's going to cost me more to put in gas, and it's not worth it, and I have to put in the electric anyway, then we should not have to hit them over the head with it at all. But come on, this is, this is us really, really trying to be leaders and be responsible. This is hardly trying to sweep the issue under the rug and wait for later. And I, I, I don't feel comfortable with that, and I don't like turning it into that, and we didn't spend our time in those meetings talking about that. We spent our time saying, how do we make this work and have it make sense at the same time?
Okay.
Okay, go ahead, Susan.
First, to Councilmember Wyerick's point, we, I recognize there's no one single cure to the, you know, the things that are coming down the road with climate. I mean, I recognize that. This is just one piece in my mind, one piece, a small piece of the puzzle. But what I would like to do now is find some common ground, because I, I felt that Councilmember Blatts made very valid points that I need to, you know, I need to, I'm capable of reconsidering things. I would like, is it possible to separate affordable housing and accessory dwelling units and see if we can find consensus to remove that exemption, provided with the understanding about, what do you call that, the electric panel, you know, where it's practical, where it's possible? Because for many people, it will be possible, let us at least, you know, remove that exemption. Can we?
That, that could be done, yeah.
Is there?
We vote?
Yeah, no, we haven't voted yet.
No, but is there?
It's discussion.
Consensus for, do we have, okay, can I withdraw my second to, I'm better, well?
Yes.
Or, I don't need to withdraw it, we just vote on it. We already voted, there are already three that.
Well, hold on, we haven't voted yet.
We haven't voted on the motion yet, so you.
No, okay, so we have a motion, and we have a second.
I'll keep my second.
And so.
And we have one more, and we have one more comment.
Do you want, you want to make?
We're in discussion, then we vote on the motion.
Right, we're in discussion. Suzha finished. Is there anyone else who would like to say anything before we vote on this? Go ahead.
So I just, I, I think one of the things that's, that has been a part of this discussion from day one, and that this process, as well as we had thought we had created a great committee to help us achieve success in this area, it was a top-down committee, and it was an edict from five people as to how we should achieve these reach codes in our community. Now, I think every one of those members, and then I'll put Justin in that group now, they're very smart people, very intelligent people, and I think that they're, that what they desire is appropriate. But for a community, a community needs the ability to work through things like this without someone beating them over the head on how to do it. And what we achieved with this process here is we're 99% there on new construction. And if the Habitat for Humanity group comes back and actually displays to us that electric is cheaper than gas, this body then has the right to amend this and do exactly what you'd like to achieve, Suzha. So I'm saying there's nothing wrong with what we have, I'm going to, I'm going to stay with what we have, what's, what's recommended. And like I said, we can do more in this community, but we're not going to do much more in new construction. This community does not, is not based on building new. We are a community that remodels, and we need to address reach codes in that aspect of the community, and I would call that reach two, and we are going to do that.
Well, I, I would like to say something. 95% of the construction that happens now, approximately, ADUs and affordable housing. So basically, that exemption makes this.
That's a new, Mayor, that's new construction.
Yes, yes.
Okay, that's not construction.
No, new construction. So what I'm saying is that exemption, it makes this quite powerless. And keep in mind that this has been, this was voted on in 2019. I believe this is the fourth time it's come back to council to review. And as I said, the time is now. We have to stop kicking this down the road, and we actually have to be leaders in this area and take action. So we have, if we're finished with discussion, we do have a, we have a motion and we have a second, so let's vote on that first.
And then we can have another motion?
Well, let's see what happens.
Well, I'm going to make another motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed?
No.
So my motion would be to not remove accessory dwelling units. I think everything else.
How about electric ready?
Yeah, requiring.
I'm going to ask the council members to please bring it back to the chair. Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry for hitting that so hard, I didn't mean to.
Okay.
Who would like to speak next?
I may need help with expressing this, but I did not understand, okay, yeah, I want, it's, it's currently it states, remove all exemptions from the ordinance except for freestanding accessory dwelling units and affordable housing exemption. I want to separate those two and, and include the freestanding accessory dwelling units where, where it's possible. It just seems very reasonable, and we're encouraging that, and once, and if they don't, so are you saying that, are you, is your, I'll wait and hear what Councilmember Wyerick has to say.
Okay, so you're.
Yeah, that's my motion.
Okay, you made a motion.
Someone read the motion back?
Yeah, I think it's.
Let's just, let's talk first.
Removing all of the exemptions except for the affordable housing exemption.
Okay, if you could wait to be called on, Bill?
To me, the electric ready is compelling, because if you, and I, and I would actually be open to expanding electric ready, the concept, into a broader applicability to remodeling situations.
Yeah, well, I'm sorry.
And, so I'll be quick about it.
Yeah.
And so to me, that's the focus is electric ready, because then we expand it into more than just absolute new construction. It applies to everything. People are going to go with the, if it's, if it's required to be both, both available, then they're going to go with electric, if indeed everything proves out to be the most affordable. And the, the preservation of individual choice is melded with making the most progress on, you know, the approach of buildings of impact on climate change. That's my thought.
Ryan?
Yeah, I completely agree. We discussed that, the, where we were with that, and why it's not included, is we weren't sure, there's some complications when you're talking about additions, about like the air conditioning system being on one thing and something else being, changing it, and these, we weren't really sure. So what we thought was, hey, let's, let's get these in, see what kind of hardship exemptions are either passed, not passed, see if we can't get some more information. Let the, you know, part of the state building code is going to make this a little easier. Once these, once electric ready becomes more ubiquitous out there, because it's in more building codes, then hopefully we can see costs come down as well, and then installation's a little simpler. So we, we thought.
down as well, and then installation's a little simpler. So we, we thought this was an appropriate step with a discussion we had about how, you know, ultimately, we're, I don't think we're there yet, but we do want to try and roll some of these things into where it's really gonna count, right? Which is remodeling, upgrade, you know, all those other things.
That wasn't even part of my motion.
Can you bring it back to the chair? Wait just a sec.
And I, and we, we just did not have, I, I'm with you, we're just, we're still discussing it. And, um, so it was thought about. That's why we didn't include it in this round. But I think it's something that, you know, how, we'd like to get, because one thing we have a lack of is data. We don't have a lot of data. We have a lot of studies. We have a lot of anecdotal information. We don't have a lot of what came in, how did the people, like, we couldn't get an answer exactly to how many people were presented with the electric information and still chose gas. All the ADUs had chosen, but I'm like, well, if they don't know, and we're not pushing them for it, so we wanted to really build in that educational part to it, to make sure nobody is getting out of this without either lying or reading the material. And if they read the material and they don't lie, then they're gonna have to still get through a hardship exception. So, and, and we wanted to, that's why it's listed in there, it's kinda open. It wasn't going to be something simple. It's not going to be the end of the world, but we wanted something that has some real teeth so that it's not a caveat, you know, catch-all for everybody not to be, uh, responsible to have to do this.
Uh, Souza?
Yes, I have a, a different line of thinking. I, I see no reason after, even after what you said, to not, uh, include, to remove the exemption for ADUs. Just even, you, in my mind, you gave, just gave the rationale, rationale for not removing ADUs.
I wasn't arguing that, Souza.
Huh?
I wasn't saying that we should remove them. No, I agree with you.
No, but in my mind-
I'm gonna remind the council members that you need to bring it back to the chair, and there's no crosstalk. So, could, when you're finished?
Well, it, it just feels to me that we haven't made any, uh, even, um, Colin Jones pointed out, it was, it was a useless reach, basically a useless reach code. But, you know, we're making a little bit of progress, and we've had three years to educate the public, and hopefully we'll, we'll get serious about that. But it's not just our job. If, if members of the public are reading, it's on all the news, you know, why, why does this, um, necessary? And in, you know, back in March, Mark Whitman provided us with, um, uh, what do you call that? A chart of the costs. And, anyway, um, I do not understand why you would want to state rather than the state that you want to exempt, because that puts doubt in the, in people's minds, in my opinion, and-
Souza, if you're referring to me, I gotta respond. I'm not, I'm not, that's not what I said. I'm not, I'm not-
Okay, once again, I'm gonna remind, I'm gonna remind that, yeah, but-
Mayor, we can, we're politely talking. I don't think it's necessary to interrupt. We're trying to, she's confused about something.
I'm asking you, when you want to speak, to ask the chair.
I am, I'm asking you, if I can speak, to clarify what's going on.
Oh, wanna finish?
Yeah. The, Souza, that's, that's not at all what I was saying. I agree with you that I think we should include ADUs as requirement, non-exempt electric ready requirement, even on the freestanding ones. A junior ADUs and additions is what we were discussing, because a junior ADU is in the form of an addition. And I, I don't agree with going there yet, but with the idea that we'd look at that in the future.
You were saying what you were saying. So, yeah. Okay, I disagree.
Randy?
I'm ready to make a motion to close debate, and let's vote.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second?
Please a second.
Do we have a second? Do you wanna repeat, repeat the motion, Souza?
Oh, my motion was very simple, that we do not include ADUs in the list of exemptions.
And, and include the other exemptions, though?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Since we couldn't get consensus, a majority vote-
Okay.
-on everything, I thought that we could at least move, take a step forward and not have an, uh, an exemption for ADUs.
Okay.
The motion is to, can I ask a question on the motion? So the motion is to not include ADUs in the electric requirement?
No.
Or not include ADUs in any exemptions?
Yeah, I'm just going by the, 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 the first recommendation states, remove all exemptions from the ordinance except for freestanding accessory dwelling units.
So-
I'm saying, do not remove freestanding accessory dwelling.
Just understand your motion. Your motion is to say there would not be an electric ready requirement for ADUs.
No, it would be required. So why would you, it would be required, so-
If I could jump in briefly here-
Yes, please, please.
I think I understand what's happening here. Councilmember Francina's motion is not to touch electric ready. It is to maintain the existing no gas requirement in the existing reach code and to delete the exemption for ADUs. That is quite distinct from this proposal by Councilmembers Blatz and Wyerick.
Right.
Your proposal involves electric ready, which allows gas. Councilmember Francina's proposal does not involve electric ready.
Yes.
But I'll ask Councilmember Francina to clarify.
That's, that's correct.
So you're, you're-
I don't see the need to have, uh, that, that choice for accessory dwelling units. I think most of them are inclined to do that anyway. So why-
So if I could clarify briefly, your motion is to maintain the existing reach code, which requires all electric and prohibits gas in new construction, and to delete the exemption that allows ADUs to be gas or electric?
Yes.
Okay. That wouldn't need a second to move, to move forward.
Okay, do we have a second?
Okay.
Motion fails for lack of a second.
Thank you.
May I make a motion?
Sure.
All right. I would like to make a motion that we, uh, require all buildings to be electric ready unless all new construction to be electric ready, with the only exceptions being affordable housing or a hardship exemption. That's it.
I'll second that.
Okay, could we have, uh, we need a roll call here? Gail? No, we don't. Uh, yea or nay?
Yea.
Yea.
All in favor, yea?
Yea.
Yea.
And I'm gonna say nay, because we deserve a clean reach code here in Ojai, so. Thank you. All right, let's take a five-minute break, and we will be back.
I'm really, am I just really against, right? Or could he did not say, says we're dwelling units, so. I'll put this on.
What do you got?
Okay.
Well, I almost, it's a clock's not working, because I'm looking at it.
I got him. I wanna make an announcement before the meeting starts. I guess I'll, I'll push it, this on. Um, I was told that the Zoom link, for those of us watching the meeting, has no sound. We can see the slides, but not the council, and the sound cut out.
I think, um, James-
Oh, this was 6:47, sorry. Okay. Okay.
I think that has been solved, yeah.
Was that time, or is it someone at the door?
She, she wanted to get back in?
Yeah, she wants to come back in, once, how she was.
Yeah.
We're trying to get her in before we come back.
She tried, I know, she said, um, the city lane on the side does not-
Which is really cool.
Ask her, I sent her, I emailed her the link. And then as far as her sound was concerned, James, I figured out, somehow I asked that my, turned the sound off, and he figured it out, and turned it back on, and like, I'm not sure how-
Yeah, that was how everyone-
Made the sound go away. But she should be able to get in. I can email her too.
Very cool.
Okay.
I love it.
Yeah, please, we never remember.
Do you want me to email her? She has, she has the link two different ways.
Okay, I just texted her, so.
No.
I'm listening to what the specific is all doing.
What time is it anyway?
Are you ready?
Yeah.
Yeah, you ready?
Yeah.
Okay, I've said, if you want to log back in, you can use the-
Okay, okay. Everybody ready? Okay, we are back, and I just wanna, uh, say one note, just a reminder that there is no crosstalk. And, and Ryan, I realize you were having a civil conversation with Civil, I mean, with, uh, with Souza. Um, I'm gonna require that when council members want to speak, so that we can run an efficient meeting, that you ask to be acknowledged by the chair. So thank you very much.
Can I ask something of the city attorney? Uh, this is at the mayor's discretion, right? If another, if someone else that was running the meeting wanted to allow limited respectful crosstalk, that would be okay, correct?
It is at the mayor's discretion, and any ruling by the mayor can be appealed to the full body.
Okay, I would appeal that. Because I-
If I could rec, make a recommendation, my recommendation would be to, that the mayor runs the meeting as the mayor sees fit, and if there's a particular ruling, then appeal that, rather than the generic, I intend to run the meeting one way versus the other. It is all, everything's appealable, but I'm not sure that that'll accomplish anything when there's not a specific decision at issue. That make sense?
No, I, I thought I was appealing that she doesn't allow any crosstalk whatsoever, that it's a hard, fast rule. Whereas sometimes, that actually delays the meeting. There's bound, in a natural situation, even with regulations and rules, there's bound to be some spontaneous crosstalk. She could limit it and put it, bang her gavel, and put an end to it. But I do not approve that there's no exceptions. I, I feel like basically that's what the mayor, who I love dearly, is saying. But in this regard, I disagree. That's all.
Understood, and I would suggest we revisit that as it comes up.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
All right, we will move on to item number five, the CalPERS retired and annuant, annuent position.
Annuant, yeah. Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and I'm happy to keep this item as brief and simple as possible. Hopefully, um, it sounds complicated. It's, it's on the agenda as a CalPERS retired, retired annuant position. Essentially, what it, what it means is, um, when somebody retires from one agency through CalPERS, which is our pension, uh, provider, uh, when they retire from one agency through CalPERS, before they can come back to work, uh, especially within a particular period of time after the retirement, the, um, for transparency and, and clarity, uh, the city that would hire that person would, uh, is required to put an item on an agenda to, um, kind of, uh, explain that, and then get the, and actually have the city council approve, uh, the appointment and the salary range, um, uh, salary schedule. And so, again, it sounds complicated, but essentially, we would like to hire, um, Ms. Palmer, uh, who recently retired after twenty-three, three years of service from a public works administrator position in the city of Camarillo, to help us with, um, with some specific projects. And so to do that, I need the city council, and recommend that the city council approve the salary schedule and adopt the resolution, uh, for the salary schedule and the appointment, so.
Thank you, James. Uh, any questions from council?
One quick question.
Yep, go ahead.
Uh, the last paragraph, um, no other benefits, incentive, compensation, and lieu of benefits or other form of compensation is to be paid to Ms. Palmer, et cetera. Does that include compensation time?
Does that include?
Does that include comp time? No comp time?
Correct, no comp time.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? No public comment, any public comment on Zoom, Gail?
If there's anyone in the Zoom queue who would like to speak on this item, please use the raise hand function now.
Okay, let's move on to discussion. Randy?
I don't need to discuss it, I was ready to make a motion.
Same here.
Okay.
So, is the motion, James or Matt, to accept the recommendation and adopt the resolution, amending the salary schedule to include the classification, an hourly wage for retired, what is it, annuant?
Annuant. Annuant.
Annuant, employee, thank you. And adopt a resolution appointing Lindy Moore Palmer as an extra part-time help employee in the city managers.
Second motion.
With the salary range of fifty-one F and an hourly rate of fifty-twenty-two an hour.
Second motion.
Okay, a roll call, please, Gail?
Councilmember Blatz?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Wybrick?
Yes.
Mayor Styx?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Haney?
Yes.
Great, all right, we will move on to our last item, number six, request from two.
Well, that's her.
Yeah, thank you.
Father recognized you.
Thank you for attending.
Congratulations.
Thank you, welcome aboard, welcome to the team, I was going to say that, but I didn't.
That's so nice, thank you for, thank you for coming, thank you.
Don't judge us by our meeting.
Okay, number six, request from two council members to consider a property owner request to apply a special overlay zone to eight oh one East O.I. Avenue. James, you have a presentation?
I, I did, I know normally we, we leave it to the council members, but I did want to just give a couple pieces of background, just as information. So, as the report notes, there was a request from a property owner for the city to consider applying the special housing overlay, which would allow for development of affordable housing at that property. I wanted to, before we kind of turn it over to council, just give a general idea of what the, the standard process would be for these types of requests. And that is that typically these projects would apply for a general plan amendment and a zoning map change for the SPL overlay. Those would go through the planning commission and then to the city council. There's a typical, or there's a standard base fee of four hundred and fifty dollars and then after the first couple of hours, there's then an hourly rate for the application to be processed and the environmental work. We estimate that the cost for that would probably be about fifteen thousand dollars and it would likely take about five to six months. And that's like the standard process. As we'll get into and as we noted in the report, you know, one of the reasons why this request would come to council is if the council, if the council wants to try to expedite a request related to affordable housing, that is something that the city council could do. And so, we just wanted to explain kind of what the normal process is and explain why then in the report, we note that three of the council options, you know, there's, there's probably more, but the three basic options would be either the council taking no action, which would leave the applicant to go through that process I just described. That, number two, that the council provide feedback regarding whether there's support for potentially identifying this as an SPL overlay site. And the reason why we, we explain that is a lot of times what people have concern about is spending all of that money and time and not knowing if the city even wants it. So, one, option two is intended to give them the feedback, but it would still leave it through the standard process. And then there's option three, which is if the council prioritizes, or chose to prioritize affordable housing and looked at this opportunity as something it wanted to support, it could just direct the planning commission to review that, that application. And so, those are the three options. It really does come down to essentially the, the policy choice of whether the council wants to encourage the project or not, so.
Thank you, James. Any questions from council?
Is it, is it, it may be, this may be a premature question. I mean, but is it possible to do two and three?
Yes, I would, well, kind of. Part of two says, you know, give feedback and then leave it to the applicant to submit an application. So, the council could give feedback and then, but going to option three would then not, the part about leaving it to the applicant would not be relevant anymore. So, I think what, what you would, what that would look like would be giving feedback, whether we think, whether, whether the council's interested or not, and then determining then whether it should go to the planning commission.
Okay, that answers my question, it was just a hypothetical.
Question, Bill?
Not a question, I had a, I had comments.
Okay, we have public comments.
I have comments too.
Okay.
So, with the SPL overlay, we generally put that on properties with, potentially without the consent of the property owner? Does that happen or do we always have their consent? Cause I, I don't know if I, I know with RENA numbers, it's been an issue in the past, but the places that we, where, where we've outlined for it, were those in concert with, because I don't think they were at the request of every property owner.
Yeah, so that's a good question and just as a little bit of background and then I'll answer that directly, but, so our RENA number this year was fifty-three. We have well in excess of that many sites or that many units zoned for, so, so we don't have to add anymore at this time. But we have had properties in the past, or, and currently who are.
Just say this real quick for anybody, RENA is the regional housing authority that gives us a, a minimum number of affordable units that we have to at least zone for in a given period of time, in case anybody.
Correct, thank you. And then, but, so there are, there is a site, at least one currently on, that was not with the concurrence of the property owner.
And I would add, I believe, a couple. If you go back to two cycles ago, when the first SPL was put in place in two thousand and fourteen, there were at least a couple that were done without the consent.
But unlike changing zoning of, you know, general plan amendment from R one, R two, or from public land, we had one recently, right, that was PL to, I think, R two.
R two.
That required a general amendment. This is a little different because we're going to SPL, right? I mean, that, that, I mean, I, I know the process would be the same, but we don't always treat SPL, a rezoning to SPL, the same way we would, we've treated in the past, going from PL to R two or R one to R three or those types of things.
Correct, and I think, you know, the PL question, the council in the past has specifically stated that, you know, to, the goal of being protective of the PL zone, the council's also in the past stated support for pursuing affordable housing projects. So, so that would be a difference between those two as well.
And the, and under the.
If I could jump in briefly, is that the SPL is an overlay zone. Adding the SPL overlay zone to a site does not change the underlying zoning.
Commercial zoning.
And thus, the underlying allowed uses, it's distinct from the others you've cited.
Right, that's, and that's, that was the other thing I was going to say, thank you, Matt, because it's kind of a double layer, it's kind of a double zoning. Correct. That gives you a little expansive use in the commercial zone and it's limited to just affordable housing in the SPL, correct? Or is there any other, is there any other possible land uses that you'd be able to, you know, by having an SPL, doesn't, other than all the commercial, that would be allowed under C one?
Right, C one.
Expand anything else?
The SPL overlay zoning itself just allows for affordable housing, although remember, as I recall, it allows for some mix of affordable end market rate, but it's housing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to public comment. First, we have Nick Oatway and then Bill Miley.
Hello, I'm Nicholas Oatway, local architect, interested in seeing housing develop in the city of Ojai. Particularly interested from not just the physical aspect of it, but the social aspect of having a place for people who work in Ojai to live without sweating bullets every month. I've, I ran into the commander of the local American Legion in arranging for parking spaces for a project that I was designing and is now under construction across the street next to Dave West's.
Midtown Westridge.
Grocery store. What?
Westridge.
Yes, Westridge.
Yeah.
And we, we've spent a lot of time talking about it. He had no problem giving us the extra parking spaces. But as I started to look at this piece of property, which is approximately the same as Dave West's, Westridge Midtown, his Westridge Midtown is a perfect square of three hundred feet on every side. And this piece of property is three hundred and one feet on every, on all four sides. And it, a four, it's just a perfect example of what happened when we first put our general plans together and just figured that everybody over the age of sixteen wanted to and was loving to drive their DeLavly, DeSoto, or whatever it was that they wanted to get into. And they would drive downtown to do everything, find a job, buy the groceries. But I think the future town of Ojai, just as many, many towns are discovering in America, that the downtown needs to have some people living in it, who can move and live and enjoy their lives without having to get in a car every morning to do anything. So, I am committed to building housing that people can live without sweating bullets. And, and not just housing, but a social place to live and work and enjoy the town. So, I'm basically wandering a little, but I've had many discussions and we have.
Thank you, Nick.
Two seconds.
Okay, two seconds. Is it, I'm going to ask the council?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I'm not, at this point, I just wanted to get the American Legion to buy a concept. And I'm doing that pro bono and I told them I'm a little over the top with work and it would probably be September or October before I would have such a thing. But at that point, I, I am going to present not just a plan, but a whole really working relationship for raising the funds that it will take to make affordable housing. It's going to take a lot of funds. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nick. Next, we have Bill Miley.
Bill Miley, hello? It was worth the wait. I am assisting Nick Oatway in this project. I like it a lot. So, I support the third option, the city council direct the planning commission to consider an overlay for this property. And I think there's another part of it too, and, well, I don't think the city manager mentioned that, but there was a discussion that there was a possible exemption that would give the American Legion the right to process this without fees. And I think that would be worthy to consider, because the American Legion is, depend on dues, they have another business there that I'm sure they get money from, art, military art program, and then help of Ojai pay something for their building, I'm sure, for their thrift store. But the American Legion runs that on dues from their members and they have been there probably for over fifty years. And my understanding is the properties are paid off, step free.
Yeah.
So, it's a mixed use, development, affordable housing, different income levels, commercial, existing, proposed retail and business. And I understand they will place, place a priority on veterans to rent their facilities. So, when compared to state housing department requirements, it meets all the prime requirements. It's located, it's in the middle of town, you can walk and you have pharmacies and restaurants and grocery stores. And so, the administrative memo talks about the five sites in the housing element, but they're really not very good sites. One on Montgomery, which we're working on, they have been for four years, is a quarter of an acre, right? And that's going to happen with Habitat. The other, another one is the school district and we know what that's all about. And then there's Mr. Becker's one and the old Combs Iron Factory. And then the bowling alley, Mark Whitman has a proposal coming up to the planning commission for a restaurant and a recreational pool, okay? And then there's the one over on Adamson's on Bryant Circle, they're dividing that of some sort, okay? So, I don't think there's, the only real potential right now is that American Legion potential. And it, in my understanding, it's really a great opportunity, because it will be mixed, mixed income, retail, they got commercial at the back. And they're going to do such things as, they're going to place limits on the parking so that that isn't just full of people parking for their apartments.
Thank you, Bill.
Some more time, please.
We're going to limit to three minutes unless the council.
It's fine with me if you can please this thought.
Thirty more seconds?
Okay, thirty seconds?
So, they're going to place with contracts for the people that live there, so they'll benefit from one car and maybe get a benefit for a reduction on their income, on their rent. So, it's a great opportunity and I would like the city council to support the message to the planning commission to consider it. And also, I would like you to consider waiving the fees, because they're a nonprofit and they don't have a lot of money. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Any, any comments on Zoom, Gail?
No comments on Zoom.
Okay, we'll move on to discussion.
All right, do you want to start? Can I start?
Well, I think Ryan had his hand up first.
You know, let me, I will call on you, remember? Okay, Ryan, you're first.
Thank you. I, this, if, if we decide to move forward with this with no fees, it has to go to planning first, correct? All right, I just wanted to make sure, that's all.
Okay, Bill?
Just as a disclosure, councilperson Francina and myself met with Nick Oatway the other day and we walked the entire site. I like to walk perimeters, so I understand completely about it. I was really impressed with the potential of this site. There's no existing housing on it, it's very heavily underutilized, it's across the street from grocery and walking distance to all other kinds of services. And I think it, it just, I, I would agree with Mr. Miley, this is an absolute wonderful opportunity by having, by, by several factors. One, the, the nature of it in its current state. Number two, it's owned by a nonprofit, free and clear, with no debt. And I just think that it, it makes sense that we indicate an interest, because the only way to appropriately do affordable housing is with an SBA, SPL overlay zone to get the, the density. But as with everything in Ojai, the design matters. And so, what I'm leaning towards is that we say, yes, we're interested, but we're not committed in terms of a formal SPL overlay process until we see Nick Oatway's concept review and that that go to planning and that, given the fact that it's a nonprofit and he's doing his pro bono work and it's affordable housing, that we consider a slimmed down concept review process, not a full SEQA, et cetera, costly thing, and waive the fees for a, a truly basic concept review in front of the planning commission to see the design idea and then we get the planning commission feedback, but we not commit to an SBA, an SPL overlay zone until we see the, the concept and where we might be going with this. That's where I'm feeling right now.
Randy and then Suzie?
Oh, Suzie can go on.
Suzie, go ahead.
As Bill indicated, we walked the property last night around sunset, when it cooled off, so you could see the wonderful views of the mountains. And I was also interested to note that even if we went to two stories, it would not block, as far as I could tell, anybody's views, views yet. There's no other houses around there in back that would be impacted. The people living there would have wonderful views, even if it was two stories. And I, I want to express my support for everything that councilmember Bill said, William. And I want to express my support for everything that councilmember Bill said, William, I never know, Wierich.
That's all right.
Horrible, yeah. It's okay, you deserve the, you know, the title. But my thinking is I'd like to hear from the architect, Nick Otway, whether he needs, what he needs as far as, he wants to feel confident that we are approving the SBL overlay. Is it enough based on what you said, or would you like something more, does he need something more concrete so that they're not wasting their time? And I encourage council to walk the property. It's where help of Ojai thrift shop is, it was way larger than I had envisioned. And do you want to mention, Bill, the swales and the, we walked the perimeter, we spent at least an hour there. I see great potential and the possibility of at least 40 units possibly more. And when Nick Otway says, without sweating bullets, what he means is truly affordable housing, you know, not the kind of affordable housing where you have to make $70,000 a year, right? That's, the priority of the project is to create, you know, low, you know, by saying low income, it's almost like a stigma attached to it, so I don't know quite the right wording. But I've known Nick Otway for many decades, and I know his projects are always environmental, bicycle, pedestrian-friendly, and he understands that we would have very strong water saving, all of the things that usually the planning commission would require. And I think also there's gonna be a park, a park area, right? You mentioned that last night, so maybe.
Can I approach the council?
Is council in agreement?
I don't need to hear from Mr. White.
I'm not, let's move on.
Okay, wait, let's finish our discussion.
It's not bad news, Nick. It's not a negative.
Yeah, no, it's not bad news. Randy, you want to speak?
You know, Nick, just so, again, you can sit down. Every time anyone who comes to us and says affordable housing, our ears prick up. I'm 100% behind it as far as the terms, affordable housing. But let's get back into the nuts and bolts of what we need before we make a decision. And that's why, as much as we would all say, yeah, 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 the reality is in the nuts and bolts and what's actually gonna be presented to us. I think we need to do that. If we waive the fees, James, what are we waiving?
Well, so, as I mentioned before, for a full, the standard process would be 15 grand, but I think the idea of a simple concept review with the direction from council not to spend unnecessary staff time on it, we can, it would be, we could get that cost down substantially, you know, spend maybe a couple hours on it, it'd be a few hundred dollars.
So I guess I'm going back to, if someone else, and again, don't take this the wrong way, but if someone else approached us and said, we're gonna do an SBL overlay, and we like you to waive the fees or give us a streamlined bill, why are we gonna do that? Because we know the applicant or we don't know the applicant, so I just want to be clear there. The second thing that kind of perked my ears is when someone said, we're gonna waive SEQA requirements. How do we, how do we, I'm just saying, how do we, I'm responding to what I hear, how do we waive that if they're required? And are they required at this stage, or would they be required at a different stage down the road?
Bill?
Yeah.
Wait, I asked the city manager that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
So I think all the concerns that you're raising are the typical concerns I would have with somebody kind of showing up with a request out of order in the process. But I think the process that was laid out a couple of minutes ago by councilmember Wierich of maybe kind of lowering the expectations of what they're getting, they're not getting the full review, they're not getting the SEQA review or anything at this point until the city sees a design, and then at that time, the city will decide what it wants to do. So I think the idea to answer the second part of your question first was not to waive the SEQA requirements, but instead not to, for that first very simple concept review, not to go through the whole process and spend the staff time on it.
And if I could jump in, just to finish the point there, the city can't just waive SEQA. State law, we have to do it. There are exemptions that apply in certain cases that we can assess. We can move forward with a concept review on the idea and the design and not dive deeply into SEQA, just reserve that for later. The city council could not approve the SBL overlay until SEQA compliance was done, but you can defer it. A concept review doesn't trigger SEQA, approval does.
I just, my last question, again, this just comes down to procedures for me. If any other person walked in off the street, are we gonna do like, are we gonna do a like reduction of fees for anyone in the future coming down the road that wants to do the same type of construction process? Or is that, again, up to council?
The staff response to, because we get the similar requests from time to time, is the staff responses, there's a standard process to apply for it. There's also a process in our city where somebody could then take that proposal to the city council, and the city council can agendize it. So that's, that's the process, and that's how this item got on the agenda. Our staff response will remain the same. If we receive future requests, it'll be, go through the planning commission, you know, and they can always go through planning commission or see if they can get two council members to put it on an agenda.
Okay. I'd like to say something then, Ryan. You know, I am all for housing for very low, acutely low, extremely low-income households. I'm also for good government. And Ojai recently completed its housing element, which applied housing overlays to multiple properties. We are now in compliance with state housing laws. We have a process in place where the applicant can fill out the correct forms and pay a fee if they want to pursue changes in land use designations on one or more properties. I'm uncomfortable deciding on another overlay when the applicant has not turned in an application. The application gives us information that we, we as decision makers can evaluate well in advance of the meeting. In addition, at our next council meeting, we will be taking action on a proposed development agreement that would authorize housing developments at four different sites. I concur with former mayor Sue Horgan, who consistently advocated for good government. Following our own rules is good government. Making a major land use decision without requiring the property owner to fill out necessary forms to inform us as to their intentions and just before we decide on four other projects is not good government. So I would like to make a motion that staff contact the applicant and ask them to fill out the correct forms and pay the fee. Ryan?
I don't know if we're waiting for a second. I wanted to get my question in. One thing I, this is why I asked the question earlier, so I just want to kind of reiterate it, is that we put SBL zoning overlays on properties without their consent. So that's why I wanted to bring that up. I already knew the answer to the questions I was asking, but to make the point that this isn't doing anyone a favor, we do this sometimes when they don't want it done. So I'm not saying that I necessarily want to do this tonight, I'm gonna propose something else, but I want to say that this is not a land use entitlement situation where someone would necessarily come in and ask for a general plan amendment and ask for these other things. It's sometimes imposed on the property without them even wanting it, and it's a completely different beast than any other type of zoning because it's a special overlay, so it should be handled in a special manner. What I would recommend, and I wrote down here something, and Mr. Wierich kind of agreed, I don't like, in land use situations, it can be a little concerning if you start making land use approvals for redoing the zoning or overlays without knowing what the project is. It can have unintended consequences. Doesn't mean we're not for it. I love the idea, I've walked that property a million times. I used to go, what was it called, the Cactus Cafe, you guys remember? Yeah, see, I've been here a while. It had the poker guys playing in the front, was one of my favorite places to eat. There's the karate studio over there. The American Legion, by the way, get to that pancake breakfast on 4th of July, support your local legion. It's a really great facility, and I, it is, it has a massively set-back parking lot. There's a lot of real positive things with it. However, if it was really dense, it could be a problem being on Ojai Avenue, but there's a lot of things we'd have to look at. So that's why I don't want to make it more complicated, but I, what I would say is, if this is an option, you know, we are conditionally approving an SBL overlay pending the recommendation of the planning commission after they review, a concept review, not for necessarily purposes of commenting on the entire minutia of the design, but more importantly, from a more 30,000-foot view so that we can determine whether we want to add it on the SBL overlay. And I think that's question one, because obviously, we're not going to have a full design and have everything buttoned up as far as approvals prior to having to figure out the zoning. But I think we have maybe at least a consensus, or at least my opinion is, it'd be nice to have something. And Mr. Otway has never been shy to be able to provide a diagram of what he wants things to look like. I don't want to put any extra work on you, but I know you said you were doing this pro bono, so, you know, I think that we would be very, very respectful of a design that came through and flexible, but I also have to say, you're looking at today, and by the time this thing gets approved, it may be a completely different group of people are up here, we don't know yet. So that's, that's one thing that is concerning. But I also don't want to put an SBL overlay on it, have this project fall apart for some reason, and then be burdened by a new developer who's trying to use the entitlement process that we can't say no to because it's on the books. This also, I feel a little differently, this might be something pending some initial review that might be appropriate for a development agreement. I don't know yet, but it might be complicated enough that it meets the level where we might want to look at that. But even if that was true, it's still have to go through planning, and I think what we need is, hey, what's the general idea of what we're talking about? What are some densities? What are some, you know, kind of rough sketches of what we might be seeing? And then we can decide on the overlay, and then post that, we can ultimately be in a decision process if the project moves forward to approve it or not. That seems like a very appropriate intermediate step, and I personally would be happy to do that without any fees, especially understanding that the American Legion owns all the property, that's what I'm reading, I want to make sure that's, that's true, and knowing what they provided this community, they're an institution around here. I see them significantly different, Councilmember Haney, than, than some other applicants, and that's why I would feel comfortable waiving some of those fees.
Yeah, they're not, no.
Yes, Randy?
Well, I'm just, I'll clarify that, I'm just trying to say that.
Absolutely.
It's not necessarily fair to the rest of any developer or any, you know, anybody coming to planning for something of this nature. That's all I was trying to clarify, was that I am 100% behind it, I believe in this gentleman 100%, and I do understand the American Legion and what they've done for this community for the last 50 years. I just don't want to give the, I don't want to give this interpretation or this view to anyone else in the city that we treat people differently because they're special. We either are or we aren't. If this is something that we feel we can do within the parameters of what you say, James, we can do, and Matt, you say we can do legally, I'm 100% behind it. One last question, did I hear 301 by 301? That's only 9,000 square feet, am I correct?
Ninety.
Or 90,000 square feet? 90,000 square feet, okay. All right, thank you.
Susa, comment? Yeah. I believe Councilmember Wierich and I brought this forward because we are in a housing crisis. I don't know if you have a gut feeling for how bad it is, I'm living it. I know this week alone, I met at least four longtime Ojai residents who are moving. People are moving in droves, we're losing our families, we're losing longtime residents who desperately want to stay here, but there is absolutely no housing unless you can afford, especially like me, if you have two dogs, unless you have $4,000 to $10,000 a month that you can afford. So our motivation is to find a way to move this forward, that's our motivation. I feel this is separate from the four Becker projects. This is a completely different project with a completely different, with, in many ways, a different goal. Thank you.
Yes, I understand, and that's why I'm asking that the application be filled out so that we can get more information. So I made a motion, anyone second? Okay. Bill?
Is it appropriate to make another motion? I'd like to move that we indicate an interest in an SBL overlay zone pending a basic concept review, as basic as possible, minimizing staff time with a presentation to a planning commission and waived fees.
I second that. And I think Mr. Otway understands, is that clear, Nick? Do you understand where we're, okay. That's the important part, if you have questions, you always talk to us, though.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
You know, I'm struggling with this because of the huge amount of fees that we're waiving. I'm just struggling with it, it just seems like we're giving away $15,000, and I know it's for a good cause, but I'm just telling you.
That's not what he said.
Please avoid the cross.
I'm just telling you, I'm struggling with it. I'm gonna go along with this. I'm gonna go along with this because of what I've heard the city manager said we're gonna do. My concern, again, is that someone else is gonna come forward and is gonna be told, no, go through the process, and we're gonna end up looking not very good up here. That's my fear.
Okay, so you're voting?
With him.
Okay, and I'm voting nay, so we, okay.
Congratulations, promo.
I think it was 4-1. I just want to make sure, we're not, the only fees we're waiving are for this concept review. Whatever happens after that will be subject, will be subject to, that was not part of my motion.
Yeah, and I, I'm.
Basic, which means basic.
And I'm particularly taking the direction to not spend, to spend as little staff time as we can on it, so.
So we're just dipping our toe in the water.
You said two or three hours.
Okay. All right, we will move on to councilmember reports. Anything to report out?
Can you give us a moment to?
I'll speak real quick, we had a great mediation today, and we'll have another day tomorrow. So we spent, what, eight hours today, we ran from Ventura and had enough time to go home and get a bite to eat and come to here, but we're not gonna, we can't talk about the specifics of the, of the mediation, but I can say that Bill and I, as of today, feel very good about the direction that we're heading.
Great news. Anyone else?
We're gonna have future agenda items separately, right?
Yep, next we go to city manager's report, do you want?
No, no, I'll wait for the city manager's report.
James?
Yes. I have a, I hate to do it, but a couple slides. With the activities upcoming.
Everyone's gone.
Well, if anybody watches the replay.
Oh, Kimberly's.
The thing that shows up on this channel.
Yeah. So, so just a reminder, not that anybody forgot, but this week, the Independence Day festivities begin, so Sunday, people may not realize that Sunday night, there's a free concert at the Libby Bowl as the kickoff. On Monday, there is the Lions Club Breakfast at Chaparral Auditorium at, from 7:00 to 10:00 AM, the 9:00 AM youth run, and 10:00 AM parade, which I've seen the chairs out, so I think people are aware of that one. And then our 9:15 fireworks show at Nordoff with gates opening at 5:30. And so that's the big event coming up between now and the next meeting. We have a couple of concerts coming up in around that timeframe as well. The Sterling Concert Series continues Saturday, July 9th, 7:00 PM, Stephen Percy of RAT. And Wednesday, July 13th, we'll have the return of the Wednesday Rotary West concerts. And then Saturday, the 16th, it'll be a Sterling concert from former members of Oingo Boingo. It's too late to say that. And then, oh, go ahead.
Can you assure the public that we're gonna be monitoring the sound, as several residents have desperately requested?
Yeah, so I was gonna speak to that. So we, and we just, so we are installing some permanent sound monitoring equipment that will be able to give us the readings of the different concerts. I will note, I think one challenge is, we've had several years without concerts, and so we actually did monitor sound at the last concert, and it didn't exceed the allowed level, but I do think that because we're seeing so many events that people are noticing it, so we, the concert before that, we weren't able to have somebody out there to monitor sound, so I can't speak to that one, but we're installing the equipment, so we'll be able to track it for all of these events, so. And then what we'll do with that is, as we see issues, we'll be able to correct them because we'll have the data, and we'll be able to follow up with the Sterling concert promoters, so. And then last, we're partnering, the city's partnering with the Film Society for Friday Night Community Film Series at the Bowl. Night Community Film Series at the Bowl, starting on, right now, expected to start July 29th. So we wanted to let people know. They had started to announce film titles and then made some changes to them, so we're going to hold off on announcing the titles, but that'll be coming July 29th at the Bowl as well. So lots of activities. I think I'll speak, take a minute. I assume this will be a question or a future agenda item. Obviously, with a lot of events, we are noticing, we said earlier this year that we are noticing a record number of events coming in. That hasn't slowed down. We're just seeing more and more events come in. So I think with that in mind, and then some of the feedback from this weekend and the different issues related to tour buses and et cetera, we are planning to put a report together and put some, make some recommendations about some, maybe some limitations or restrictions we can put on some of these things to make sure that they're appropriate for the community. So we're working on that. I think right now, it's going to be the meeting in August because the July meeting is packed. We talked earlier about the development agreement, the four project, four housing projects. That's on the July 12th agenda. We have a couple other of public hearings that we've already had to put notices in the paper for. We have an appeal related to a fire issue. We have the Becker four property development agreement. And we're also working on a couple other high priority projects. So the July 12th meeting, the historic resources, our historic preservation commission's recommendations and requests that they had asked about a couple meetings ago. So we have a pretty full agenda for July 12th, but we'll look at what we can do in the meantime, and then we'll bring a full report back on the whole events and tour bus issue at that August meeting.
Thank you, James. Lot happening. Wow. And thank you for taking care of that. Bill and then Ryan?
When Cynthia and I walked the Lavender Festival and as we said, okay, we're bailing on this nonsense, and sought to cross in the middle of the block and found our passage on the crosswalk blocked by a tour bus, I resolved to have, as a future agenda item, this is not acceptable. We cannot have tour buses parking on crosswalks. We cannot have tour buses parking in residential areas. I don't think we can have Libby Park booked for the kind of intense use that we saw on Saturday. That is monetizing public land for private benefit. And we have every right to regulate the intensity of that use in Libby, in Libby Park. It was ridiculously over-intense in so many ways. And I would like to see what we can have endorsed by this council for things like, you know, what is your marketing plan? What is your traffic plan? You know, limitations on the intensity of use of Libby Park, and especially things like, you know what, if, you know, don't block crosswalks with tour buses. I mean, we can go on and on and on, but I think you get the gist. I think we need regulations on the, on these use of our park to monetize for private profit. We've just got to have limitations on it. We've got to have management and direct, and mitigations involved. And I really, what I saw Saturday was somebody taking a franchise from what used to be a community event and fully monetizing it for the, for private profit. And I don't want, I don't want to see it anymore.
Ryan?
Well said, Mr. Wyerick. Yeah, the, you know, there was obviously a lot of community input. I got a couple of calls and I ventured into the swamp of Facebook to see all the wonderful things they had to say about our Lavender Festival. And, you know, only Ojai could have a Lavender Festival and have it turned a mess. But the, there was something, you know, the big difference between that and the other events we have in the park is Ojai Avenue is usually closed, right? So Fourth of July, Ojai Day, those types of things. I think that's the problem. Now, I'm not saying we should close Ojai Avenue for the Lavender Festival. Saying is that the Lavender Festival is going to be like that, then we've got to consider not having a mess of a space like that. I'm not necessarily for including Lavender Festival as one of our holidays where we block the area. But I think that's the inherent problem. We put too many people in the same place, including the cars. People don't understand. Granted, now, I will say, I had to go back and forth across town a number of times during it. I took grand, wasn't the end of the world. But trying to get into places on Ojai Avenue was a mess and I did walk down there and it was chaotic. The other thing is, they, you know, I feel, you know, we obviously want to, I know, before anybody shoots me from home, we do want to promote massive transit options for these events. Tour buses like that are not a horrible thing to bring people in, but we've got to figure out the next step is where do they go? I feel a little bit bad for the bus drivers because I don't think they had any idea what they were doing either. And I don't necessarily want to wait till August. Now, I know we may have a lot of people who'd want to show up and talk about this, but there may be an agenda item that we can do that's an intermediate fix because, I mean, I don't know. I don't want to get into discussion tonight, but I think Park Road or the big parking lot at Park Road, I don't know if those are being parked in during that, if it's empty. There's the side parking lot along the other side. Those are two places. They're our property. They're away from everybody. Seems like it would make sense. I don't know how hard it would be to say, you know, for the next, I don't know if there's an event between now and August, but I wouldn't want to see that happen again with us not being able to say, hey, not a big deal. You just park on Park Road, hence the name. And then we have kind of an easy, like, this shouldn't be that complicated. But I feel a little bad because I don't think the tour buses had any idea what to do either. And if we're going to have that many people, which we have a whole different debate about that, but if they're going to come in, we'd rather they travel in one single unit than a bunch of separate cars. But I don't think it would be a problem to say, hey, can you get over to one spot to park? And I don't know. Do we know if there's any events between the two, between July and August? Because I don't want to go on Facebook again if we screw this up.
Yeah, we looked at the, to the end of July. I didn't look past that. I think what I'm hearing, and I think maybe the compromise could be, we could bring a tour bus management plan to the next meeting. Hopefully, we can keep it simple enough where it's just on consent. But, you know, and I think if we're managing it, I don't see a whole lot of.
Well, the other thing I was wondering is, even if we can't get, because if it's a new ordinance, we got to read it twice. I know how that works. But maybe we can tell our elite staff at the Sheriff's Department over here that, hey, next time this happens, can we just get some guys to knock on someone's door and go, hey, guys, can we get you to park over here? If they, if we can't enforce it, maybe, but I, I don't know what those tour, I can't imagine those tour buses waiting for everybody to come back to the locations they were parked in. They must be getting a call to go to Ojai Avenue somewhere. So if they're on Park Road or on Blanche Street where they were, or these other surface areas where they literally took up the whole road, I, you know, and I think they were trying to park in shade. There, I think there's some shade over in Park. But if they say, hey, we got a spot for you over here, at least as an interim solution, maybe we're trying and then we'll get it fixed when we can.
Yeah, that's where, I think the two simple elements of what we try to bring is a simple step would be identifying a place where they can go, place where they can go and places where they can't go, and then looping the Sheriff's Department in to give them the heads up.
And I would add, there are opportunities through the urgency ordinance process with the four-fifth vote to set a rule effective at the next meeting and then come back over time with the first and second reading.
Thank you, Matt.
But I'll say, I don't think we really need an ordinance at this point. I think it's, that's a pretty simple direction we can get from council.
The only other question I had, sorry, but is, is it legal? I mean, is there, was there any problem with where they were parked? I don't think there's a rule against it at this point, right?
On a crosswalk?
Well, on a crosswalk, yeah. But I, I don't know about them. I'm thinking more of the ones that were in the neighborhood.
From what I have heard of what occurred, the only laws that were violated were the crosswalk parking. There are no current rules prohibiting tour buses parking in residential streets.
That's what I thought, okay.
That can be changed and that's not on tonight's agenda.
All right. Randy's next and then Susa.
So before this becomes a discussion item, Matt, I thought that's what you were going to chime in with. We're going a little overboard here. But it seems to me, two things. First, when we set up the Sterling Venture contract, the Libby Bowl Committee actually spent the first year reviewing all the noise levels coming out of the bowl. And it was interesting, there was no noise coming out of the backside of it, very little on the side. It was the projection coming out the front that was the problem. The neighbors on the sides of it loved it. Again, the people behind it couldn't hear it. And I could hear it up at my house, so I kind of enjoyed it, but it was, it was far away. So we had, we had done studies on that and it really wasn't an impact. What I think the impact is the fact of we had nothing for two years. The second thing is, when we developed that, we developed a, we, a master plan of events for the community. And I'm not sure if that master plan has been kept up. But I know Sterling, we, I think our contract with them is either 20 or 21 concerts a year. And I think there's a little give and take with maybe two or three more negotiated with That still leaves, you know, 30, 40 weeks out of the year. And it just seems like what we're doing right now is just stuffing this community with events. Even the three that you listed up there that, that are probably appropriate because they're community-driven, it's just three more events that we've stuffed into the bowl or stuffed into a park. So I'm thinking that you actually need to go back to the master calendar. And I think before we look at any more events, any future events, that we actually start counting, how many are we having a week? Because it's, as many, as much as I like a lot of these events, we're really having an adverse impact on the community. And, and that's all I heard. Can you believe this? And when I drove through at 11 o'clock, I drove right through it, went right to my house. There was, it was a Zully 11 and there was no reason to be around it. But again, we have, it says here, Bill says something about not a right for the park or something, and I'm just misquoting you, but it's not about the right, it's about the responsibility that we have and that we've got to manage these resources. When you look at what the Lavender Festival did to all of the grounds adjacent to all of those oaks that are in that park, if that's not a consideration to anyone that is pitching a tent in that facility, then we've done something wrong about our responsibility of managing our heritage oaks in this community. So I think that's, it's important we recognize that.
Susa?
Yeah, I strongly concur with the comments from my three colleagues on the council. Thank you. Strongly concur. And I have a couple of questions. You know, we have a sign now at the bottom of, at the upper part of North Signal that says, no buses past this point. So we don't, we can legally, if it becomes necessary, have signs that said, no buses in, parking in residential neighborhoods. Is that correct?
Yes. With the right signage in place, the city can set limits that prohibit tour bus parking in certain locations. But as noted, that's not being decided tonight.
No, no, just a question. But also, isn't idling against the law that's polluting and noise?
No.
Okay, so it's up to the police or some, or the, or people, I mean, sometimes.
It's not illegal.
It's not illegal.
You can park your car and idle it. That is not illegal. Wisdom of it is another question, but the law is, it's not illegal.
Okay, so those are all part of the things we're going to discuss in the, in the future. It is true that a bus can, can keep 50 cars from entering the city. So, so it seems like you can do something without council consent to prevent this. And, okay, my question is, did we know, who knew ahead of time that, some people say 11 tour buses? Did anyone know this, that the event organizers know this ahead of time? Did they market? Where did these, how did these buses get here?
That's information we don't yet have. Staff can develop it and come back to the next meeting with that information. We don't yet know that. So I think we have direction to put this on the next agenda.
Thank you.
For a discussion.
Who knew what and when, Matt?
Yeah, if I can speak real quick, though, to the Lavender Festival in particular, it is, it was always a nonprofit event and it was not intended to be this giant commercial event. And I think this year, they changed management and, you know, when we get our, we get a very simple application, and particularly when it's a nonprofit, it's a low fee because we encourage nonprofit events. And I think we're going to have to look at this closer next year and see if this is the type of event we encourage really at this point.
Well, I look forward to talking about this in the future. Thank you for looking into it, James and Matt. And with that, thank you all for your participation and expertise and we adjourn.
Future agenda items?
That was.
That was a future, I thought we were discussing.
That's easy. That was a future agenda.
Oh, really? I'm sorry?
Yeah.
I have one more.
Okay, all right. One more future agenda item.
And for the record, we still love Lavender.
Someone pinch me over here. Am I awake? Again, I have said it earlier and I just want to, I want to reiterate the fact that. Microphone? I just want to, thank you whoever said that to me. We did the reach codes and I know it doesn't make everyone happy and I understand that. We need to address reach codes in the elements of this community where the majority of our construction takes place, takes place on. And what I'd like to do is, is, obviously, July 12th is packed, so let's think of a different time to bring it back if I get a second. But I'd like for the ad hoc committee of Ryan and myself and Steve and Tim, Tim or Justin, I'm sorry, Justin, to reconvene a reach two and actually start addressing the, the construction practices or remodels in the valley or in the city and how we can actually generate some additional reach codes that will allow community members to be a part of that discussion and a part of how we're going to develop those, that second level of reach codes. So we started out in reach one, I'll call it, with a top-down. And I'm thinking the ad hoc committee needs to address how we can do a bottom-up. I sent away from, when I was looking how to do this, here's a Climate Ready Communities book that I sent away for. I'm going to set this up for the committee. But what it does is actually tells you how to, how to develop a sustainable community. And more importantly, it actually tells you how you can address the reduction of fossil fuels and enhance renewables in your community when you're developing a sustainable community. So this might be part of our guideline, might be part of it, but I would, if, Ryan, you'd like to second it and you'd like to continue on this adventure, I think it's important that we do it.
Yeah, I don't really know what I'm seconding. I don't think we're putting an exact date on, but I'm happy to keep discussing it. I do, the only caveat I have is, I want to get some data back. I want to get feedback from the applicants in this process so we can then, you know, like anything, take our data and amend our policies appropriately. Because I don't know if we're ready, I don't know, I don't know if we'll have enough information, but I'm happy to meet whenever you want as the ad hoc committee.
Well, what I'm, what I'm looking at is if we, if we meet as a committee and we create some type of format, and then we create another body of community members, I don't want to get too deep into the weeds tonight. But if you really want to change and you really want to grow in your community, you've got to get community buy-in. And we didn't get buy-in on the last reach codes because it was top-down. And as good, and as, and as much as we needed it, it's not what we need at this level. We need the community to know, what are the advantages and disadvantages of changing? What are the costs associated to change? You know, there's a number of questions that have to be answered, that have to be answered by community members because when I find out that it's, that it's good for me, I'm going to reach over and say it's good for you. Right now, we don't have that. What we have right now is, we're told it's good for you. We need the opposite. We need the community saying it's good for us.
Okay. Well, I would definitely disagree because all the data is out there on climate change.